Okay, before I start the meeting, I would like to inform everyone that all meetings are live and recorded through YouTube. Please make sure unless you are speaking, your device is muted. Thank you. We've had incident. So let's go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, roll call. All members of council are present with the exception of Counselor Lasowski, who is excused. Approval of tonight's agenda. Do you have a motion? I'm hearing a motion by Counselor Hagen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Pauling. I didn't do this when I first got on council. I was 30. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comments. Tonight, because we're doing a work session, I'm going to go ahead and have the people that want to talk about the work session to comment during the public comment section. And if we have questions during the work session, we'll let, if you have questions during the work session, we'll allow robust discussion. So Marissa Jacobs, place for her to there next to Hugh. Welcome.
Thank you. We're very happy when we don't have to use these masks. I feel like I have to like and then talk. Good evening, Mayor Burge, City Council staff and City Council and Budget Committee members. My name's Marissa Jacobs and I'm speaking to you this evening as a taxpaying citizen of Scappus. Thank you for providing me an opportunity to speak with you regarding the work session you're about to commence regarding the coronavirus state local fiscal recovery funds established by American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The 1.6 million in relief funds is an extraordinary opportunity for our community. As our leaders, you approve how the monies will be spent and the choices you make today will either improve or stagnate the community. I want to look back in 10 years and be proud that the city invested the 1.6 million funds wisely within our community and point to key investments that built a stronger and more thriving Scappus. As I've been following the conversations at council and reading the government materials, it appears that it might be helpful to establish and align on basic criteria for how requests and proposals are evaluated to determine how the money is spent. If you agree with my thoughts, may I suggest a starting point for defining the criteria? For example, something as simple as funds must improve the overall welfare of the citizens of Scappus and the community. If we were to align on this criterion and review the current requests, some may not make the cut. For example, while bonuses and premium pay for city staff and police officers are kind goodwill gestures may not be able to be fully defensible when a citizen asks how these bent, how these investments benefited the overall welfare of the citizens and the community. I can share with you the perception my neighbors have shared with me. I'll just say it's not positive and it's very inappropriate language for me to repeat. The optics don't look good, nor do they feel good to me neither. Additionally, the fire department's request for 200,000 for an ambulance, while it may meet the initial criteria, improving the overall welfare of citizens of Scappus and the community, evaluating this request further, it would be hard for you to approve. And let me explain. First, I applaud Chief Pritchard's efforts as he's doing what any good leader would do, which is go after funding. However, an ambulance is a budgetary matter that's needed to be budgeted every five years. And further, the recent passage of the bond measure this past November was a massive fiscal increase to our fire department. 14.5 million over five years. For a comparison, Tillamook operates three fire stations at 2.9 million. Scappus has one fire station operating at 7.16 million, including 1 million in an unapproved line item. The Small Business Resource Center, while a nice to have by digging deeper, funding a brick and mortar in another town could be questionable. Maybe something on a smaller scale feels more appropriate for the small business community. The water meters, childcare and habitat requests should all go through a similar exercise. This is a wonderful opportunity for our community. It's a moment in time we can look back and be proud of how the funding was invested. So I urge you as our elected officials to be brave and thoughtful. Take the time to determine how to spend our funds. Commence a working group inclusive of community leaders, volunteers, city staff and a council representative to shape the recommendation on how to spend the money grounded in a basic guideline. Improve the overall welfare for the citizens of Scappus. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Backus. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Robbie Backus. I'm also on the Economic Development Committee. I just have some brief comments about ARP funds as well. Also with my economics background, I feel like I can offer some insights onto this issue. Ideally, the money should be distributed to individuals, organizations or programs where the total benefit is the greatest. This would not only mean distributing the funds to places where the most residents are affected, but also to places where the marginal benefit is the greatest. Places where even small amounts of money can produce meaningful results. Sometimes this requires looking at the primary, secondary and tertiary effects. Similarly, I would like to disperse the money or I would like to see the money dispersed to people or places where the multiplier is the highest and where it will spur the most growth and long-term benefits. I like to view this moment as an opportunity for two things. Although each are completely valid, I would like to see more emphasis placed on the second option. First, to right any wrongs and support those that suffered the most during the last one and a half years. Or two, to fix and improve the town moving forward and into the future. Some key thoughts. Although giving out bonuses, pay raises and hazard pay may be completely valid, who's to judge which jobs and/or people deserve it the most? Even the term frontline workers and essential workers can be ambiguous. Are we talking about first responders, medical staff, mail carriers, bus and truck drivers, grocery store clerks, and the list goes on. Also, giving bonuses to those that don't need it doesn't do much good for the town. They'll end up saving the money or spending it on vacations out of state. What is, second point, what is the difference between the fire department and the schools? Both organizations would love extra money, but each should be able to budget and raise money on their own. I personally think that investing in education is one of the smartest investments an individual or government can make. I might be biased on that. I currently work for the high school. Investing in childcare has many secondary and tertiary benefits. It allows parents and primarily mothers to get a job and keep it. More participants in the workforce is good on many levels. Increases the tax base, spurs economic growth, reduces racial and gender inequality, improves the growth and development of the children and relieves grandparents from babysitting duties. Lastly, I think assisting small and local businesses is very important. However, I think the city would need to proceed with caution if they choose to go this route. Some businesses need the assistance much more than others. Plus, there's already substantial amounts of federal aid over the last one and a half years for small businesses. And with all the money in the economy, some businesses have actually had record years. Also, it wouldn't do much good to prop up a small business that is destined to fail. I always prefer to invest in people rather than the businesses. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Robbie.
Well said. Thank you.
All right, is anyone else like to comment? Just step to the microphone. Just state your name and the city or organization you represent.
Jennifer Anderson. I'm with Columbia County Habitat for Humanity. I'm the executive director and I have Boyd Ruby here, who is our board president. So I wrote a letter that is in your packet and I just wanted to highlight one thing that I may not have explained here.
Could you speak into the microphone?
Sure. So this money is to help the hardest hit communities in the pandemic. And it's widely accepted that low income people are hit harder than any other income range. This is who we serve. By far, most of our applicants are having a problem with overcrowding. We have families of five or six living in a wonder, one or two bedroom apartment. So the effect the pandemic has had on these type of people is there's no way to social distance. Students that had to do homework at home had no quiet place to study. There's studies done by Children's First of Oregon that show that children raised in a habitat home are more likely to go to college. They have increased grades, improved grades. So this is one thing that I wanted to point out here. So what we want, what our proposal is, is to build this ten unit on this property in Scappus that Community Action Team owns currently and that we are planning to buy this property from them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I will go ahead and close public comments. Okay, so next item is a consent agenda, September 7th, 2021, City Council Meeting Minutes, September 20th, 2021, City Council Minutes and October 11th, 2021, Special City Council Meeting Minutes. Do you have a motion?
I still move.
Moved by Counselor McHugh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Miller. I'm just forgetting that side of the room today. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, purchase of holiday decorations. Mr. Sukow.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, good evening. So as you travel through most cities in the region in, in November and December, you'll notice a lot of them have lighted Christmas decorations hanging from the telephone poles, banners, et cetera. In my travels, obviously in Scappus, I've seen that we really don't have anything of that nature other than what we, the community club is decorated here in front of City Hall Watts House, et cetera. So my ask is very simple. I get flyers of all kinds of different ornaments that we could be pursuing. If you have the interest to, my question to you is if you would like me to pursue that? If so, if I could get a budget established from you, kind of what you think would be a reasonable expenditure for such, we have money. The Parks Department that I would offer up as maybe an option to fund this for park improvements. And where we're at, I would just like to get some direction from council. This is something that's of interest for council to have me pursue, bring back or just move forward with.
Counsel?
I think at this point I'm interested in knowing what you're looking at and the cost of those things. And having a discussion with council, maybe in a work session on I just, I have no idea what the budget would be for anything like this or what I would give reins to, not reins like Alex Reins, but reins. Yeah.
So things we'd be looking at is there are posts, banner brackets along the highway. So we would look at some sort of season greetings type banners that would replace the ones that are out during the summertime with something more of the festival season. Other things that were options were garland on the light poles down here that have the globes on them and things like that. All of these features hover between one to $300 apiece, depending on what you're looking at.
Okay. And then I guess I would also be interested in knowing if there's other line items in the budget or a different place than parks that we could look at using funds. So I'm not prepared to, I would love, I would just love more information. So I would love for you to pursue bringing something back and us continuing the conversation, but.
Dave, well, first of all, thank you for the initiative here. I think, you know, we all like Christmas celebrations and the festivities and the, and the gala. You know, I, from my perspective, I'd like to kind of take up, make an incremental approach to this and see how, how we do it. Let's say, let's say we identify a location, City Hall or banners on the, on the post, whatever. And we dedicate this year $5,000 to that and see how it, how it rolls out and how it's received. And if it looks, really looks positive, then maybe next year we, we amp it up a little bit. So that was my kind of take on it at this point, but I do appreciate the initiative and the thought and that's, that's pretty cool. Thank you.
So Miller.
I echo the concerns. If we could just get a proposal with what you're proposing, the cost visuals, we can see it, where they'd be located. I think that would inform us to be able to make a decision on this.
I, I like the idea from Counselor Hagen, like, you know, adding to, to the fleet per se, you know, gradually. And what small steps we could take, you know, year by year, every, you know, so some sort of a rollout model or, you know, that would be nice.
It seemed to me that timing's a big problem here and it's almost, I think, I feel there's a general consensus, this is a good thing to do. And I do think it really is a big plus for our community to have some kind of, you know, Christmas decorations that are visible as people drive through town. I'm thinking that maybe this, instead of coming from the arcs, it might be economic development. It seems like they, this would be kind of an economic development issue. But regardless of where it comes from, it all ends up, you know, it all ends up coming out of the same budget. And so I don't know what amount would be that would get you started, but Mr. Counselor Hagen mentioned 5,000. Would you, you want to do with two or 3,000?
Yeah, we could get started with whatever. This was just to get the discussion started. There was no, in, in my world, the parks is the only thing I have any say in. It's general fund.
It's just extra work for you, right?
It was just, just to have dialogue. If, if given a lesser amount and you wanted to try to get something going as far as the banners this year, we could. It is running up against the deadline to get anything that isn't, you know, if they had to be custom made, it would be problematic. If you just want to kick this until next year, we could have something identified in the budget for next year that's approved and go that route. It's really, I mean, there are many things that we could just purchase and get started with. It's really up to you guys. And like I said, I just wanted to start dialogue or if you just shut it down, then we never pursue it again.
We're not shutting it.
None of us has said bah humbug yet. Do you know the plans for the community club and their decorations this year?
Not heard from them yet, I would imagine.
Yeah, they're I, I know who's sitting back behind you.
Yeah. We start having
You.
Real soon.
Joe, please. Please. Neighbor.
Hi, I'm Josette Hugo and I'm president of the community club this year. Yes, I think we've identified the 29th of November to start putting up our lights. And as you know, they're freestanding units for the most part. Out on the highway and then in the, the front yard of the Watts House. This year, we're hoping to put some more lights up on the Watts House itself. So.
Is there a way that our public works can coordinate with you to help that?
The lights on the Watts House?
Yeah.
They do.
Or any of the
We, we do help with the decorations. We transport and set up
Yes.
As much as possible.
Because I like the idea of adding along the road because it's kind of dark.
Yeah. Wait, I don't know, back in the dark ages, they used to put up lights. I mean, the and a PGE was the one that did it, that helped put up some things on the standards out there on the highway.
They're just going to have candles.
Yes, right. In fact, we, we still have them in, you know, in our lockup.
You know someone at the PUD that could help us with that?
Oh, yes. Yeah. 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 So I mean, I think it's a good idea and Dave, I think that, yeah, it's not all that expensive depending on what you want to do. Banners are probably the least expensive. If you wanted to have something lighted, that starts around 300 a unit and goes up to, I don't know, three or four thousand dollars if you want to. So it's, you know, it's, it's all over the map.
And my concern would be deliver, how
Yeah.
How quickly you could get them? Are they on ships off the coast of California right now or are they somewhere in warehouses?
I think they're in warehouses.
Okay. Just, it would, is, it's what, the 18th? So it'd be quite a quick turnaround, even if we approve something tonight.
Yeah, we have about six weeks ultimately time it with the community club to go up around the same time. In my discussions with them in the past, the different vendors, they have stock items that come off the shelf.
I'd like to
I mean, we wouldn't be pursuing lighted fixtures this year. We don't have, especially along Highway 30, those are ODOT poles and they don't have the wiring capacity to my knowledge to support lights. The lighted ones in the future would maybe be down East Columbia or other corridors that we would identify.
I think it'd be nice to, maybe the first meeting of November, we can have a proposal we could look at.
If you're interested, I can contact them and see what banner sizes and see if there's availability and time or not.
I, I would assume that we'd have to do that considering the timing of it all.
Can you bring your catalog? Sticky note, our wish list.
Yeah, no, I would be happy to bring this back. I just, like I said, I just wanted to start the dialogue to see if there was interest, so.
Okay. Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
All right, next item, work session. The City Council and the Budget Committee will be looking at the coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds established by the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. Alexandra Reins.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So you have obviously brought this back for further discussion. So you'll see in the packet before you some of the same information. There is some, also some new information. What I thought we could do first, since we have some guests with us this evening is we have Eva and then Paul and they have come to talk about the childcare initiative that you all had asked about previously. So I thought I would let them go ahead and present on that topic. And then we also have Dave, who's here to present on the request for water meters. So I thought I'd let him get, him get through those two presentations and we had some additional information from Counselor Miller. And he's not planning to present, but he's here for questions. So I thought it best to maybe get through those, those items and then at, at that point, you know, open it up for just general discussion. But I wanted to make sure to give them the chance to present first since they're, they are loaning us their time. So Eva, do you want to go ahead and get started? And then can you screen share the presentation?
I would be happy to. Thank you. Make sure that I get the right. So can you see my presentation?
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Council members, staff, thank you for having me here tonight. My name is Eva Manderson and I am the Director for Childcare Resource and Referral for Clotsop, Columbia and Tillamook Counties. And now that I've got this up in two places on my screen, did my slide switch for you or are you still looking at the same entry slide?
It changed.
It changed.
Perfect. Thank you. Also with me tonight is Paul Vogel. Paul, do you want to introduce yourself?
Yeah, I'm Paul Vogel with the Columbia Economic Team and I work with Eva in a regional coalition and also in a Columbia County Coalition with childcare as a, as a business and economic issue. And when I was at the last council meeting, a concerned citizen raised the issue of childcare and Alex was had to dial a phone and called up the next day and said, what can we do? What do you think we can do? And so we've been working with Eva some of the, some of the programs that they've got, but really trying to get to some recommendations, manageable recommendations that are sort of customized to Scappus and the type of childcare providers you have here. But we're just here in support.
Thank you, Paul. So I want to give a little bit of background on the agency that I work with and what our role is in the, in the three counties and, and for providers there in Scappus. Childcare Resource and Referral is our agency, is one of 15 regions, agencies across the state. We work in support of childcare providers. Our role really is retention and recruitment of childcare providers, working with them on building high quality professional development and supporting them with their businesses in their communities. Our backbone agency is the Northwest Regional ESD. Sometimes we're a little bit confusing. We are Northwest Regional Childcare Resource and Referral with the ESD as our backbone agency. Again, we're, we work in Clotsop, Columbia and Tillamook Counties and this is a grant that comes to the ESD from the Early Learning Division. Lots of different work that we do. I think points of interest for tonight is the Childcare and Education Work Group that Paul referenced. These are community conversations that are cross-sector and collaborative discussions that began at the beginning of the pandemic and have really increased in partnership across and through the pandemic. At the county level, your Commissioner, Commissioner McGruder is part of this work group. Parks and Rec, City of, City of St. Helens, Early Learning Hub are all parts of your work group for Columbia County in Tillamook and Clotsop Counties. We have SBDCs that are involved with us. And so really looking at large groups of people that are impacted by childcare, be it the availability of or the, the lack of. We also have
Eva, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, so there's no representation from Scappus School District in these conversations?
You know, I am going to guess that we've got somebody on that group that is from Scappus, but I'm not sure exactly who, who that representative is. I apologize for that. I can, I can definitely look at the list and come back to you with that, that answer. And so also pieces of work that I think are relevant here in the discussion tonight. My team runs a business cohort, strengthening business cohort where we're focused on providing business training for childcare providers and helping them strengthen their businesses. And we also have a cohort that works on other professional development strands, so be it college, college coursework where they're working on their bachelor's degree or they're working on obtaining their child development associate. Both of those are workforce development cohorts that we participate in. Kaylish Tarham is your county specialist. So she's the one that's located there in Columbia County and where I'm, I'm actually located in Tillamook County. So the childcare question came to us, like Paul said, it was raised at one of your, one of your meetings and he brought that back and we started discussing what this could look like with a partnership in Scappus. We brought together some city level data that I'll share with all of you around childcare that is available to a certain extent in Scappus. So tonight I'm going to share Scappus childcare data and some information about the state ARPA funds. So these are different than the ARPA funds that you're talking about tonight for your work session. These are ARPA funds that are given to the Early Learning Division and they are being released to childcare providers right now. The application is open in the form of a stabilization grant. I'll share a little bit about other current work that's happening across Oregon to support business practices. And then a proposal that Scappus City Council might want to look at for an ARPA investment. The little foundational knowledge for you, I'm, I'm going to talk about four different kinds of childcare providers. These are not all of the childcare provider types that we work with. But what we did was we pulled data for childcare provider types who are eligible for the stabilization grants. So the stabilization grants again are the ARPA funds that are flowing through the Early Learning Division and directly to childcare providers. Provider types that are affected are potentially eligible registered family providers. These are providers that are licensed by the Office of Childcare. They do childcare out of their home and they have up to 10 kids. registered family providers. These are providers that are licensed by the Office of Childcare. They do childcare out of their home, and they have up to 10 kids. A certified family provider is also licensed by the Office of Childcare. They do childcare out of their home, and they have up to 16 kids. They often have an employee or an assistant that works for them. Certified Center is a larger larger business, often serves kiddos in classroom-type settings. Uh larger groups of kids also licensed by childcare Office of Childcare, and then the number of children is really based on site square footage, number of staff that they can employ. Um centers tend to be a a business day type hours where your registered family and certified family providers tend to provide evening and weekend care. They also most often provide infant and toddler care. The fourth type of provider that I'll talk to you about tonight is licensed exempt and listed with ODHS. What that means is these providers usually um the small providers that are exempt, this is the group that I'm talking about. Uh serves up to three kiddos in their home. They are not licensed by Office of Childcare. They are doing childcare for um families who are low income, who receive employment-related daycare vouchers. And the kiddos in their care are usually not related to them. So very small providers that are providing for low-income families. So those are the four groups that we selected. The ones that I didn't select to to include in the data for you. Uh they're ones that are not eligible for ARPA funds and/or they don't represent sustainable full-day solutions for families for childcare across the communities. So our Head Start programs are not eligible for ARPA. Uh they are income eligibility-based for families in your communities. I didn't include data for programs that are exempt uh centers. These are programs that are less than four hours a day. This would include school districts who are carrying a a large burden of childcare. Um because there's not other child childcare available in um your community. And the last group that I didn't include in the data is relative care. So these are uh family members providing childcare for family members and not open to referrals. So I'm gonna pause and see if there's anybody that has questions about the data points that I'm gonna share with you next.
Any questions?
I do. Um Eva, this is Counselor Grayson. Just to clarify. Is it reading right that after-school programs for school districts are not eligible with ARPA childcare funds coming out?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Yes, great question. Okay, I'll move on. This is a slide that shows you Columbia County childcare uh data. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on here, but um what I would point out is that your registered family providers in Columbia County, that's the largest number of childcare providers. And again, the um need that we're hearing around childcare is that families need childcare that can provide evening, weekend care when they work shift work and provide infant and toddler care. Um registered family, certified family, regulated subsidy are the ones that often fill that need. Certified families or certified centers, sorry, the third third uh bar over there usually care for more kiddos, but they don't often offer evening, weekend care, and very few of them offer infant and toddler care. So I'm gonna move down, and I'm gonna share you with you exactly who Scappus has. You have three registered family providers, three certified family providers, one regulated subsidy provider. So that's seven providers that do evening or could potentially be doing evening or weekend care or could be doing infant toddler care. You have two certified centers. Um and I'm gonna show you just for a different look at it. These are numbers of providers on the screen. Uh the next chart that I'm gonna show you is capacity by program. So you notice that one of the smallest bars prior was the certified center, but it actually serves the largest number of kiddos. And registered family, certified family, regulated subsidy, again, those ones that are serving the the needs that we keep hearing from communities are really serving a small number of of kiddos. The other thing that I would want to note on this slide for you, so you're understanding childcare in Scappus, is that these are numbers of slots. These are not numbers of children served, and these are not open slots. So um a program might have 10 slots that they 10 children that they can have, but that doesn't mean that there's an opening. And it doesn't mean even if there's an opening that it's accessible to families. So we often talk about availability and accessibility. Accessibility would also include cost of childcare or location of childcare provider, and is this close to their home? Is it close to their work? Is it something that is a slot that's open at the time of day that they need that they need childcare? So uh Certified Center does provide a large number, but again, it it doesn't always reach the need for what you've got happening in your community.
Eva?
Yes.
So what we don't have here is, we don't know what the the demand is, what the need would be off of any of this information. This is just showing us what we have.
Correct, correct. And I would say that the demand has been one of those numbers that's really difficult to get to. We have looked at 2-on-1 and referrals that they are are giving out for childcare. But what we also know is that families figure out how to make do. If they had it available, they would use it. If it was accessible, they would use it, but because it's not accessible, it's not available, they are piecing together things for their kiddos.
Mr. Bailey?
Ty Bailey on the Budget Committee.
Ty, could you write into the microphone?
Ty Bailey.
Bring it to your close.
Ty Bailey on the Budget Committee. Uh question also on availability. Is there any information about hours or available coverage? Because just open seats doesn't really tell us weekdays, hours, weekends. I know you can't tell how many are actively available, but do we have any hours of registration or information in that regard?
I don't have any with me. I could come back with with what I can find for you. I I know that I can tell you that you have very few, even with registered family, certified family, and regulated subsidy providers that offer evening, weekend care. So the availability there is going to be even further reduced than what you're seeing in numbers here.
Sir.
Uh Eva, Joel Haugen uh on council. Um did I understand you correctly that you could not operate a certified center in a school district for ARP using ARPA funds?
You get you get into the weeds for me, so you're testing me here, and I will do my best to answer you clearly without uh sharing all the weeds of childcare. So certified centers are licensed programs with the Office of Childcare. Usually programs that offer are offered within school districts are exempt from licensing, so they can choose to be licensed. Uh but they don't have to be licensed. Um so I think it makes me think about your uh neighbor city, St. Helens, and their school district program, the childcare program that has been run out of the high school for many years. Uh they had opted to be licensed as part of the school district. They are no longer licensed uh because they were given the opportunity to be exempt. Um but had they remained licensed, I believe they would have been eligible for ARPA funds. ARPA funds again are not available to programs that are either not licensed or not listed with ODHS. And I've got a slide here in a little bit that I two slides up, I think, that'll show you the flow of who's avail who's eligible for these funding streams and who's not.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. So I'll talk a little bit more about the ARPA release um to the Early Learning Division. So ARPA funding into the Early Learning Division um was a little over this 224 million to be paid directly to childcare providers. Um I believe the 224 million represents 90-plus percentage of what was given to the Early Learning Division for ARPA. And there was a stipulation that this 224 million is paid directly to eligible childcare programs. Uh there's a a host of requirements around uh oversight and health and safety guidelines that these programs need to follow in order to be eligible for the funding. And that's where licensing as a requirement comes in, and that's where ODHS listing uh comes in as two of the the oversight pieces for the state that help a provider meet this uh federal funding requirement. Uh the way the funding is rolling out, there's a minimum funding provided by provider type, and then there's a bonus that can be added on top of that up to a maximum funding level. Bonuses are paid to childcare programs who are serving infants and toddlers, serving families who receive childcare subsidies. So again, that's the ODHS um employment-related daycare subsidy. For providers offering extended hour weekend care, they can receive a bonus, or for programs that are providing culturally responsive care. So just a note about culturally responsive care is the practice of caring for children with culturally their of culturally diverse families that are in a way that is consistent with their practices at home. Here's the chart that I was gonna share with you. So this shows who's eligible for the stabilization money and who is not. Uh licensed exempt childcare programs who do not receive subsidies. So again, that's employment-related daycare vouchers through the Department of Human Services are not eligible. Programs that aren't 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 accepting that from families. Recorded programs also are not eligible. Often our school district programs fall into this recorded program or a license-exempt program that's not receiving subsidies. On the side of who is eligible, programs that are licensed with Office of Childcare or programs that are exempt, um but they're listed with ODHS, and they had to be listed by March 11th of 2021. So these programs are ones that were serving uh low-income families through a portion of COVID. There's also some finer details around um whether programs were receiving other federal money like Head Start um and relief nurseries. Those are not eligible for these funding streams. So what does that look like in Scappus? In this chart, you can see the number of providers. Um this corresponds to the graph that I'd shown you earlier. The minimum number of uh minimum dollar amount for their grant. And then maximum, if they're serving in all of those bonus areas, how much a program could receive. So for licensed exempt providers, you've got one who serves three or fewer kiddos in their program. They also are listed with DHS. They could receive anywhere from $6,800 to $10,880. Your certified center, you've got two of them. Minimum amount that they could bring in $66,650, maximum $233,680. So for the city of Scappus with your current numbers of programs and their current uh way that they're serving families, just under $600,000 potentially coming to the city of Scappus. Um again, this is federal ARPA through the Early Learning Division. And it's not coming out of your ARPA money in any way. It's not connected to that at all. This money is going to flow to these providers as long as they turn in their their applications.
So that money is.
There.
Eva, that money is just flowing to current providers, not someone that's new that wants to build one or.
Great question. Great question. So the the chart, if we go back to this and look, and then some finer details that are not in the chart, if they were listed with ODHS in March of 2021, they're eligible. If they're licensed at the time that they apply for the stabilization money, they can get ARPA. So that leaves a small window where we could talk about an expansion of childcare in Scappus that could potentially bring more money to childcare providers in the city of Scappus. This application is open until December 31st. It usually takes about 45 days to move somebody from unlicensed to licensed as a registered family provider. So potentially, if you had providers who are exempt right now um who are not licensed and want to become a licensed registered family provider, they could apply in the next couple of weeks if they were ready and be eligible for this grant. Now, it's a pretty big stretch if somebody wants to start something. They haven't done childcare at all, and then suddenly they want to move from not doing childcare to being a registered family. Uh that's gonna be pretty hard to do, but I do think there's some potential for uh an exempt provider who's maybe not listed with ODHS, so they wouldn't be eligible for funding to move to being a registered family provider. And they would then be able to accept more kiddos into their program, and they would also be eligible for more funding through this ARPA money. It's a great question.
Any other questions?
Yes, but I don't know if I should wait. I'll I'll just wait.
Okay.
Okay. So I'll share with you some things that are happening around the state. Uh there's a lot of interest in trying to figure out how do we stabilize childcare? Childcare has never been an easy business. It's never been a moneymaker. Uh people that do childcare get into childcare to take care of their neighbor's kiddo, and then pretty soon they find out that they're a business and they're bigger than what um they had originally intended. And they don't usually go into the business of of offering childcare as a business. Uh they go into childcare as wanting a person wanting to provide care for kids. So because of that, there's there's just a huge focus um has been in the past, but now, especially during COVID and with things being um really tenuous for providers, a a big focus on business. So um one of the the pilots that's happening in multiple places around the state of Oregon and nationally is a model called Shared Services. So this is sharing of single-person functions across many programs. So thinking about multiple programs who might employ one grant writer to do grant writing for all programs or a HR company that does HR support for multiple programs, that kind of thing. Um we also have talked about uh something called the Iron Triangle, which is a national model for strengthening childcare businesses. So this is thinking about a business, a strong business being one where tuition is set appropriately, it's collected, and the program is full. And you might think that that is a is a simple, easy thing. It's not necessarily the case. Um often we see childcare providers who don't collect for fees. They're they're busy collecting and taking care of kids, and parents come without checkbooks, and they want to talk about the kiddo's day instead of I need a I need a payment. Um so they also, when it comes to setting tuition appropriately, will charge for tuition what they would be willing to charge their neighbor or their family member, and not necessarily what it costs to do business. And and because parents don't have money to pay for childcare either, so it's always this tenuous. Uh how do we put this together in a way that uh works for families and works for childcare programs as well? Uh a third model that is starting to emerge in um Oregon, just south of us, in Lincoln County uh is called uh employer reserve slots. So this is thinking about businesses in the community paying for childcare slots in a program so that their employees are able to fill those slots. Uh an example of that would be if my business paid for three slots in Suzy's childcare program. My employees would have access to those three slots as a priority, and my employees would still pay tuition. So the money that I'm paying into Suzy's childcare helps stabilize the business. It helps them work on quality. It may help them increase compensation, so their staff stays with them, and so they don't have turnover, and they can really look at professional development and high-quality programming. The fourth model that is um being worked on in multiple regions, and I alluded to this earlier, is business training, business coaching. Um again, multiple places that are talking about how do we. Again, multiple places that are talking about how do we give programs the business training that they need, the coaching that they need to understand the complexities of being business owners. And, and that it really is that they are operating small businesses. So this is some information specifically about my business cohort that's running right now. And the cohort 2.0 that we're starting out in January. This is partnership work between the two SBDCs in Clotset and Tillamook County. Paul being my, my local Columbia County Advocate for childcare, he's been a great partner. An organization called Wonder School, which does automated business supports for childcare programs. We have delivered business training and support and incentives to help bring programs together in their knowledge and business acumen. And I brought you a few quotes. And this is some work that my team is really proud of. But also is a little emotional about. So when you hear a provider say that they knew how to take care of kids, but they didn't know how to take care of their business. I wish that I understood this when I started my business 15 years ago and the one that I think choked most of us up when, when we listened to a provider share that I understand now how important my business is to my community and I feel important and appreciated. I think all of us walked away from that, that listening session wondering how we got to a place that our childcare programs didn't feel important and appreciated. And that that person could be in business for 15 years and it took us that long to get to a space where they understood the importance of their business. So those are some things that are happening around the state. The very well-placed question about who was eligible. So I think I, I covered some of this already. There is a potential for capacity building of licensed childcare in Scappus. So thinking about reaching out to existing providers to expand and recruit and to expand and recruit new providers. This is thinking about that same question. Are there exempt providers who are in Scappus who might want to become a registered family provider? Are there registered family providers who would like to move to being certified family providers? And you can see on this slide, the additions to slots. If we're doing outreach and recruiting in Scappus specifically around can we build them up so they can apply for the ARPA funds that are coming from the Early Learning Division?
Eva, this is Counselor Grayson again. Is that something that your team is doing the legwork on? You're personally making calls on a list that you have?
So we do outreach for providers to help them with TA around the stabilization funding. And we help them if they are wanting to increase quality and build on their professional development. But there's, there's not specific work that we do right now around recruiting people to move from one childcare licensing type to another. However, it's, it's in our wheelhouse, right?
I guess my question is just communicating that ARPA funds might be available to them if they're not aware of that.
Sure, sure. So I can tell you that we have done some outreach around ARPA funds. The Office of Childcare has also released information to childcare programs about ARPA funds. And last week when I got an update, there were only 10 providers across our three counties that had not already applied for the ARPA funds that are available. Does that answer your question better?
Thank you. Yes.
So just to recap some of the things that were shared tonight that I think are important to consider as, as you look at how to invest around childcare. Childcare providers don't typically see themselves as businesses. They're caretakers and early education professionals. So they tend to think of themselves as caretakers first and businesses second. And this is, this is a piece that we're continuing to work on with them. Continuing to build their, their understanding of how much they mean in our communities, how important they are in our communities. A note there about community needs. So remembering that communities right now are looking for evening weekend care. Infant toddler care are usually served by our, our smaller businesses. And that even when we have a number of slots that's, that's in front of us, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's available and accessible to families. I think we all know, and I didn't, I didn't really say this so much, but we all know that federal funding has its complexities. Whether we're talking about the application of or the tracking of expenditures and reporting back on federal funding that we've received. And so that is a complexity for these small businesses. And that we're, we're really looking for what kind of improved capacity can we build out of this opportunity for childcare providers. It's in front of them right now. That's going to come to them from the Early Learning Division. Are there ways that, that the city can support what's happening with federal funds with your own local funds and your own local, local initiative? So all of that background to give you a proposal that you might want to consider. Certainly there are the other options that, that we've already talked about and things that are happening around the state. I think this is, builds off of those things and, and kind of looks at what can the city of Scappus do to build off of what the Early Learning Division, ARPA funds are going to be doing? So I would, I would encourage some outreach, some targeted outreach and engagement with childcare providers, talking to them about their stabilization grants and building in some additional business supports for them. That we can provide the CCRNR with some grant management support, some training, Wonder School subscriptions. And the business cohort that we've been doing in the past. Looking at deliverables back to the city, thinking about one-on-one advising, workshops being offered, successful deployment of both the federal funds that are coming to your community as well as state funds. If the city wants to invest in supporting us. Some business planning and resiliency. So really looking at how do we build up our businesses long-term to be sustainable businesses that, that continue beyond ARPA, ARPA funding the way it is coming to us now. And then, you know, just some good examples of childcare businesses in your community and strengthening them. There's a project budget for you. So we've got a person that we could contract with to do coaching. So some one-on-one time, the business cohort, which is the actual cohort training. Wonder School, I didn't talk a lot about Wonder School, but Wonder School is a, a business management system that helps a provider with automated bill pay, with enrollment. So really thinking about that iron triangle and making sure that they are charging appropriately, that they're collecting and that they're full all the time. Some engagement and promoting. So letting providers know that this is something the city is working on and, and wanting to recruit providers for. And then there's, there's some minimal admin there. So approximate total is $61,000. And just really with a mind of what can the city invest to strengthen businesses around the funding that's already coming to childcare in city of Scappus. And I'm going to pause and I'm going to say, Paul, did I leave any gaps or things that I should have said? You're my, you're my in-the-room advocate.
Oh, I really don't think so. I mean, it was a lot of context and a lot of background, but we wanted to provide that so that you knew kind of where we were coming from and why we narrowed it down to this recommendation, which was a lot of, there's going to be money available. We recommend not just throwing money at these, more money at these businesses, but instead providing them support with figuring out how to administer federal funds. Help their, help them manage through that. Help them actually as a business and provide them with the software and, and even, even the hardware. The cohort, which is proven, really help them as a business using the federal ARPA money that's coming to them as, as sort of the catalyst. And, and trying to find a way that the city could provide a focused effort if it wanted to deploy ARPA funds. That's, that's where we're coming from. Because there are a lot of things you could put money to in the childcare world that wouldn't really sustain. And this just, we just wanted to at least offer you one example of, of what we thought would, would actually help these businesses be sustained for fairly nominal investment. It'll keep, it'll keep growing as these businesses strengthen and grow. So that's all I would add. You got all the, you got all the facts and figures, but that's where we're coming from. And we just, there was, there was some interest in, in looking at childcare as an ARPA investment. So we hope that if, if nothing else, I mean, we've, we've already contacted the advisor who has done this cohort in the past. She's, she's committed that she would make, provide some capacity. But if nothing else, just give you some focus for your conversations, your considerations and conversations on something that we think would probably be the most effective.
So I had a quick question. I'm not sure if you quite answered it or not, but do you have an idea of how many of these nine, nine centers or families that are registered currently have funds currently that they've applied for?
So I can go back and look at applications for these nine. What I do know is that we have approximately 70 childcare programs across the three counties. And all of them except 10 have already applied for these funds. So I, I would hazard to guess that you might have one or two that haven't applied yet, but the rest of them are likely already submitted their applications.
Thank you.
Eva, I just wanted to thank you for a lot to chew on here. So I appreciate for both the effort you and Paul have made this evening.
Thank you. Always happy to provide more information whenever you need it. So anyone that wants to reach out for more, I'm always happy to talk childcare.
Mr. Bailey? I love the approach. One question I have is on deliverables as it compares to the projected budget. What is the capacity that you are anticipating associated there? I know we have a certain percentage of people, but is it assuming everyone goes? Is it assuming 50%? Or do we have any idea there? Or is it just kind of open-ended?
I built that budget around 15 providers. So really hoping for the total of the current group and expansion like we had talked about. So maybe some exempt providers joining who are not currently licensed providers or maybe even potentially new providers.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question because we've done a lot of
New microphone, please.
Sorry. We've done a lot of looking and follow-up on the previous cohort, looking in Tillamook as it might be applied here in Columbia County. And they got a lot of interest and the sun dropped off and then new interest. And I think they averaged out, out of, I don't know how many you had eligible, but 16 or 20 or something like this. I think they averaged out at about eight or nine. It's not, it's not going to be for everybody. But we, we felt that if we, if we, out of the total number, if we hit about that same average from the previous cohort, that would be manageable under that 22 hours, 20 hours.
So this is Mayor Verge again. Question. In Tillamook, did it expand capacity?
Yeah, you would know.
I would say that it has stabilized those businesses. I can't say that it, it has expanded capacity yet. I would also say that our cohort one, which was the one that started in January, we've had a lot of lessons learned and a lot of feedback from our childcare programs that took that course around what pieces would be better serving them upfront. And kind of thinking about how we tweak things and bring different supports to them upfront. Bring more one-on-one coaching to them. They've also had some questions around tax advising. And so this time around, I think we're, we're going to see maybe some more quick responses where, like Paul said, we did have, we had a target of 10. We had six, then we added more, then we had some drop off. And so we've really been heavy on go back to those programs and really understand what could have supported them better. So cohort 2.0 can be better for them.
There, there is a, the major factor of being in COVID, right in the heart of COVID earlier this year, which affected whether people would bring their kids or whether they could even take the kids and then, and the up and down. But what, so, so kind of technically it was a little bit of a murky picture, but all the more reason to spend a lot of one-on-one time doing the follow-up. But these people really get qualitative feedback. The, the, one of the most important lessons I took from this was I used a Small Business Development Center advisor. And their normal practice is to kind of start with the business planning aspect. What is your plan? And this and that. What we really learned is childcare providers, because they didn't get into that business to be in business, wrong place to start. Start back with your business, what you do, how many you have, what do you need for support and all that, and then work them into the actual good business practices stuff. Which was, which was huge and why, and, and why we wanted to use that particular business advisor. Cause she's learned that lesson too.
Eva, this is Counselor Grayson. I have a couple of questions or thoughts and it's going to come out kind of jumbled. So I apologize ahead of time. But one of the first things I noticed is your email address that you're with the Northwest Regional ESD. And the fact that it's unknown if there's a representative from the Scappus School District working with your organization or attending these, you know, county-wide meetings or how you had mentioned it in the beginning is somewhat disturbing to me because as an educator previously, I've had conversations with our current superintendent and the I guess the fact that we had a program housed inside the Scappus School District at the Scappus High School. It no longer exists for a variety of reasons, but mainly because the school district just sort of let it dissipate and, or they didn't have someone they could afford to pay to do it. I just feel like it's frustrating in a time like this where we have school districts in the business of serving children. And we don't have like an in-house sort of childcare program. Before it was kind of centered around this preschool kind of setup. You know, when I talked to our superintendent, the biggest issue right now is, well, if you have an exterior childcare provider coming in, you know, you go off and you just call someone in the phone book and say, hey, are you a licensed care provider? And you can do childcare at the elementary school from the hours of two to seven PM. Then there's issues of liability, right? Especially with COVID. And let's say, are they contact tracing? Is something happening during after-school hours? But it's on school property, but technically that's not an employee of theirs. So I just, I would really, really love to see some sort of a partnership. And I, I know, I know that someone at district office is familiar with your name. I just checked with them. I don't know if there's a way that we can make something happen with the school district and find a way that something is housed again here. I just feel like, you know, with COVID, every third week, four bus routes don't function because we don't have enough school bus drivers. So every week we have four bus routes of students that have nowhere to go. And there's literally just children wandering. And there's literally just children wandering around the street. I'm not even joking because there's not enough people to watch kids or people just don't have the connections to make that happen. Other thing is we have early release on Wednesdays at 1:10 in the afternoon. I mean, if there are parents that are working full-time jobs, there's no way. So if there's something right here housed in a, in a campus of a school, I'm sorry if my voice is getting a little high. It's just very irritating that I hear a lot of need and especially even people with the school district, but there's no initiative to make it happen. And I just feel like you're the perfect person and this organization to help them navigate something. I know this has nothing to do with our ARPA funds, but I just feel like this opened up my eyes that there is opportunity and maybe you can help make that happen. And it needed to happen yesterday, so you have a big job. But I would love to connect with you. I would love for you to speak at a school board meeting. I would love for you to connect with the superintendent. I just feel like there's, I think it's all great that we have, you know, people who are in business and sure, you want to help them develop their business, but like we need new blood here. Like we need, we need 125 students again yesterday who need to be watched, you know, even just after school, but constantly throughout the day. But anyways, that's my two cents. And I don't know if you can make that connection or if I can help facilitate that. But that's my, my piece.
Thank you, counselor. I believe I've met with your superintendent at the beginning of COVID when we were working on childcare issues in the beginning when school districts were closing. And, and back when your preschool program at the school district closed. And so I would be happy to connect again and see what we can put together there. I think it's, schools fill a huge need in communities. And often we've got schools that are filling childcare needs. And even when they're not filling after school childcare needs for working families, they fill a childcare need when kids are in school. And I think that was a lesson through COVID that was loud and clear when schools closed that I think we're still hearing right now, right? Like this is the connection to this current work too. So.
I think the perk, I think the perk also of having it as a high school is, I mean, I'm the kind of student that would have signed up to help do that. Like I would have as an upperclassman or at any, I mean, I went into education. I know so many people that were, took classes as, you know, ninth through 12th graders who wanted to be in that industry of, you know, childhood development. And I think that that's, it just makes the most sense to me, but.
Well, and St. Helen's, St. Helen's School District has a great model too. They have an early learning piece in their high school and they bring in students to help serve as assistants in those classrooms. And I, I believe it's a model that Scappu School District was hoping to model after. But then COVID and to be really honest with you, I'm not sure.
It was way before COVID, completely unrelated. But is this something that you can connect that you're able to help them sort of navigate? Or am I way off base?
I'm happy to connect with them around some of these pieces, but honestly, they don't all lie in my arena because they, if they're looking at being licensed, licensed childcare, which they can do, that would be Office of Childcare that does that. But I'm a good place to start. So remind me, is Tim Porter still your superintendent?
Yeah.
So I can reach out to Tim and, and see where he wants to go with exploring this further. Would be happy to do that.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
And Eva, if I could just type in, I, we, as a non-school district person, I, I've noticed that we have a lot of school district people on our list, on kind of the county coalition list. But they're probably the people we see least just because of all the stuff going on, school and changing roles and all of that sort of thing. So it, it feels like something that we need to be really intentional about as maybe we hit a rhythm with schools. Find the right person at the school districts to bring back into this so that we're getting that input. They're also getting the benefit of what I think is progressive and productive conversation. So it's, it's, it's been a little, little tougher to, to reach those folks and they've had their own handful. We've just been kind of trying to keep a, the other nucleus going. So it's a good point.
Again, I just see, you know, Northwest Regional ESD, you would think that they're in the business of helping schools and that that would be a top priority of having childcare housed in schools.
I'd just like to say thank you for those comments because I think that's really very valid that somehow that we are connected with the Northwest Regional ESD and it'd be, seems appropriate for them to pick up the ball in this case. Did you hear me? Okay, do it again. I just want to thank Counselor Grayson for her comments because I do think it's very appropriate that the ESD be involved in the issue that she's talking about. We have a problem with childcare. You know, kids are coming and going at different times and we don't have buses on some days. It's a real big problem. And we had a program at one time and it was great, but it could even be expanded on with some support, the expertise of Eva and the Northwest Regional ESD, which we are part of the Northwest Regional ESD. So I would like to see that connection established as Counselor Grayson has already, already stated. Thank you.
Hi, this is Annette Pixley from the Budget Committee. I have a question as well. I really appreciate your ideas and, you know, sharing some sort of a projected plan. But one of the big challenges we have in our community is a lack of capacity. Do you have any suggested plans for a capacity increase? Anything that you could suggest or propose for that?
So I think the, the thinking around that was that there is ARPA money coming and that if programs are expanding, that expands capacity. It also expands the funding coming into City of Scappus. So it was really thinking about how do we set up a support structure for your programs that are there currently and support them to expand capacity?
And our, our motivation is when, when childcare providers have a stable business and they're actually able to cover their bills and retain employees and, and be successful as a business, that is one of the most attractive things to recruiting to providers is that it is not, it is not a burden. It is not a way to go broke, the way you can actually do what, what you want to do and, and make a living. And, and there's, there's, there's value in capacity building by helping stabilize and make these other providers helpful or successful. Peter?
So just so you guys know, because I, I hear you guys kind of wanting one thing and it seems like the grant is for something that might be related, but not exactly what you were hoping to hear. So if you turn to page 84 of your packet and you look at the middle column, the second square bullet point down, you specifically can use funds for new or expanded, high-quality childcare to provide safe and supportive care for children. So if you were inclined to, and you would need the district's cooperation, but my guess is that there's some, and Alex and I were joking earlier today how two single childless people who are talking about childcare. But, but there's certainly, you could, you know what? I won't pretend, but, but you can. All right. Okay, sorry, sorry. I, I am childless. But so, so it would be possible to, to meet with the school district and to the extent that the barrier there is bringing in someone in order to pay them the salary in order to do that, that's a specifically allowed use of this fund. So, you know, I appreciate people need to learn how to run a business and that they can lose money on this. But if you're, the end result that you want to see is a open facility somewhere serving kids after school, whether that's through Campfire or another organization or through private, there probably is a number that could make that happen. And the, we probably can find the people who would, and I had, I had said earlier that there, my office in Westland is next to a, is next to a school and there's signs outside for Campfire. I like to go on an afternoon walk and so I see the billboards for that. So I know that organizations like that are offering, organizations are offering programs like that and we could probably connect with them. The other thing I would just say, because we're, we're pretty deep in, in the meeting and we're one, one presentation in, is the state and the league to some extent, and a lot of people have really presented this program as kind of wide open. And it really is not wide open at all. And if you continue looking at, and I think this has been a source of frustration for people, particularly when I say, well, that probably might not be an allowable use. If you look at page 84, the third column over, the, under the headline, uses outside the scope of this, the second sentence, "A general infrastructure project, for example, typically would not be included unless the project responded to a specific pandemic health need, e.g. investments in facilities for the delivery of vaccines." So setting up a pharmaceutical company. Or a specific negative economic impact of, e.g. affordable housing in a QCT. So if you look at then page 108, which is, defines QCT, that's a qualified census tract. And so what they've said under this tranche of money, there are other tranches of money where there are other uses that would be allowed. But in order for us to fund an affordable housing project, it would need to be in a QCT. And we actually don't have a QCT in the city because if you look up the definition of QCT, which I did, it is that 50% of the families in that census tract have an income of less than 60% of not the state total, but the area total. So we're talking about, we're talking about areas that have really been hit with poverty. And so, and we don't have one in the city and that's, that's a good thing because I guess it means that folks are doing, doing better, at least on a percentage basis. But it's, it's just to say that as each of these proposals comes, are, we have to go through certain steps in order to determine eligibility. And so it would be really helpful for us, I think, to understand as you look at priorities and the sort of programs that you want, you know, what are those, what are those priorities of you as a council? So then we can do that due diligence and then we're not doing the due diligence for something that wouldn't be a council priority. And so it's that upfront determination, I think, that we as staff, we're hoping to get at, at this time.
Why don't we, I don't know, I think we, has everyone digested enough information on this at this point? It looks like he's. All right. So why don't we, thank you, Eva. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Why don't we go to the next, actually, why don't we, the fire chief? He wanted to speak about the ambulances real quick. If you'd want to step up. I know what you said?
I like to say it my way. Scappus way. Thanks again for the, the opportunity to speak tonight. Sorry, I'm standing in the back corner, but I'm on call. So if I had to go, I didn't want to run through the middle of the meeting and
Go through the microphone.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
I really need to be close.
Yes.
All right. First and foremost, thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, for this opportunity and to be able to speak in front of the Budget Committee. I, I am looking forward to answering any questions. Before I get to that, I just wanted to throw out some information that I think might be valuable to you in helping make your decision on, on these ARP funds. There was a, a comment earlier this evening talking about leadership with the fire district. I thought it was important to understand the philosophy of the fire district in our leadership strategy. First and foremost, we, we believe in servant leadership. And servant leadership is all about providing for other people's needs first. So as the leader of the organization, I'm at the bottom. And the people who are at the top are the, the citizens in the community. That's followed by our staff, our officers and so on and so forth. And the reason we have that philosophy is we have an incredible responsibility for our community, which includes more than just ambulance service, fire protection, but also community risk reduction. And community risk reduction is running those small programs in the schools and throughout the community on, you know, helping kids be safe by making sure they're wearing helmets or helping with making sure there are smoke detectors in people's homes to prevent fires or to allow them to escape their house from a fire. Now, the reason why this is important to understand is we have a limited budget. And if we were to do a comparison between, say, the city, the city's budget, which is a little over 20 million, and the fire district's budget, which is about 7 million, we cover 100 square miles and the city covers about three square miles. So in terms of economies of scale, we, we've got a lot to do with not very many resources. Last November, we were very thankful that the community supported our efforts to go out for a increase in our levy. And, and just to help everyone understand the difference between a levy and a bond, a levy can only be used for staffing and operational costs. It cannot be used for purchasing equipment. That usually falls into the categories of a bond. And what we asked for from our community was funding to help staff positions with the ambulance because we're seeing a significant shortfall in our ability to staff calls 24 hours a day and provide those two ambulances. We, we provide this service out of four fire stations. So we have a boathouse that serves about 2,000 people living in floating homes and live aboard vessels. We have the Chapman Station, which is up Scappus Vernonia Highway. And we also have the Holbrook Station, which is down towards the golf course. And then our, our main station in Scappus. We do, we do have a reserve fund of about a million dollars that was identified in a couple of conversations I've had with city staff and counselors. And, and I think it's helpful for the community to understand what that million dollars is. There's a huge difference in government budgeting and how that process works. The fire district works on a cash-based budget, which means at the start of the fiscal year, which is July 1, all our expenditures and projected expenditures have to start then. Most cities and counties work on the accrual-based government budgeting, which allows you to carry costs from year to year. We cannot do that. So that million dollars is actually our tax money that we use to pay our bills from the first of July until December, when we collect our tax revenue. So if we were to spend any of that money, we wouldn't be able to pay our bills. So it's a weird thing that we have to explain from time to time as to why that shows that way in, in our budget books. Even though it's unappropriated, that, that money is actually appropriated for the next fiscal year. One of the things that we've tried really hard with in our organization is to be transparent and get information, accurate information out to the community. And we started that last year with my tenure as the chief by producing a first ever annual report. We're in the process of working on a strategic plan. But in that annual report, we talk about several different components that we're looking at in the near future. Specific to vehicles, we've got, we have to spend about $2.7 million to bring half of our fleet of 24 vehicles up to the current standard. Our ladder truck was purchased in 1992. And, and it's things like that, that we don't want to go to the community and ask for a bond for. So when we look at these ARP funds and the $200,000 and what that's going to do, it's going to allow us to free up other money that we would have already put to the ambulance that's budgeted now, but allow us to buy a fire engine earlier without having to go to the community and ask for, for huge funds. The other thing is we have to do some station upgrades in the, the near future. And we're looking at anywhere between two and a half to three and a half million dollars. So any dollars that we can put towards that with stimulus dollars that we receive from the federal So any dollars that we can put towards that with stimulus dollars that we receive from the federal government is a win for the community. So, you know, when we look at how this ambulance serves our community, it's also important to understand our revenue structure. So the city is, has the ability to, to bill for services for a multitude of different services that they provide. And the fire district does not have that ability with the exception of the ambulance. Unfortunately, the federal government, as a result of Medicare and Medicaid rules, prevent us from billing the full amount in, in ambulance transport costs. So if you look at a fifteen hundred or a seventeen hundred dollar ambulance bill, we're lucky with Medicaid if we get two hundred and fifty dollars for that transport. We're also lucky if we get four hundred and fifty for Medicare transport. So when we're trying to provide service to our community, any help we can get to acquire this, this needed equipment is going to be a benefit to our community. Right now, over seventy-four percent of our call volume is within the city limits of Scappus. Even though our area encompasses twelve thousand people and a hundred square miles, the core of our response is here. So while we are a separate government entity, we are a partner in this community and the city in providing community risk reduction, ambulance service, as well as fire protection. So with that, again, thank you for this opportunity and I'm more than happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief. We're, we're currently under the cash basis as well, I believe. We didn't move over to accrual yet. So we have the large ending fund balance, which is the same thing that carries us, the taxes are paid as well. So I completely understand that.
We have switched over, but yes, we were.
We are, we were, so we have switched. I knew that we were transitioning. Thank you very much.
I'd like to comment. Thank you very much for that report. That was excellent and a good explanation of what we're facing and difference between a bond and a levy and all those issues. I know that people don't understand that we, government agencies don't have money to operate from July first to wherever, whenever they get that first check. And that's what that cash carryover is for. Looks like a big slush fund that, you know, you can dip into anytime you want to. But it's really important that we establish a solid cash carryover for governmental agencies that we don't, and it's not even like a, you know, disaster fund or anything like that. That's a separate fund. But it's really important that that's maintained. And I liked your explanation on what, how the money's going to be used. I do have one question. It doesn't relate directly to this. But the, the urban renewal program, we have, how much money does that cost you a year?
I, I couldn't answer that question for you right offhand. I, I would have to talk with the, the city staff and then look at our, our net tax receipts at the end of the year. But, but it is significant and it's going to continue to grow larger, mostly because all the available, developable commercial property within the city limits has been gobbled up into that urban renewal district. So any new tax revenue that comes into that boundary, we will never see for up to twenty years.
Is that, could you give us some information on that when you get a chance, what that costs you?
We have that.
We have that? Okay.
Correct. It was a requirement as part of the urban renewal district when it was formed. You had to actually show what that would most likely cost the other overlapping taxing districts. So that's, that's been distributed in the past and we can redistribute that to you.
Thank you, Chief.
Did I have a question? Thank you.
All right. Why don't we move forward? Mr. Sukal.
I'm Mayor and Council. I know we're getting deep in the evening, so I'll try to go briefly, but this is a big ask. So I want to be thorough and make sure I answer all of your questions as we navigate through. The one thing I also wanted to point out at the start is why this is on here. When these funds were initially announced to us, there was an emphasis on water, wastewater and broadband infrastructure. That's why we felt this, this ask was a good fit for these funds. Have all of you looked at your packet by chance, just to kind of help me expedite some of that information? So we'll go through a few things tonight.
We also have the ability to extend the meeting if we pass that.
There's a lengthy discussion to follow. So I want to give you a quick history update of where the city has gone, where we're at now. Sorry. Water loss, we want to talk about what the city is facing with water loss. I have some slides in there from
Dave, could you? Closer, closer, closer.
Still can't hear it?
Yeah, just, it's not loud enough. I don't think it'll be picked up over the system.
Okay. Is that all right?
Yeah, that's good.
So steps that we've taken to address water loss. And then I want to touch on water meters and what we're doing with those, the current status with those, next, next steps that we're going to take. And then why this, this step in deploying these meters is important to public works and the city? So some history, back in two thousand and seven, the city converted to AMR meters. And what AMR meters are, are the ones that can be radio received in a drive-by mode. So the trucks with the crews, they can drive around the city and pick up the data for the meter reading. And at that time, approximately ninety percent of the meters were installed in radio read mode. Obviously, before my time, I think funding was probably limited and they couldn't do a hundred percent. And then in two thousand and fifteen, some, some of those meters were fit with a retrofit radio. You guys want to look and kind of show you, these top portions were replaced with radios that could send out that signal. And in two thousand and fifteen, these started to fail. So we tried to work with the manufacturer on a warranty. And that was, program was failing us. We weren't getting customer service. We weren't getting the meters. So we knew it was time to take some next steps on that. Right now, about two hundred of our meters are still manually read. Crews have to go walk and read each of those. And then in two thousand and eighteen, the city performed a water management conservation plan update as a part of our water master plan. And in that, it was recognized that the city had over thirty percent water loss. It hovered in twenty fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, about thirty-five to thirty-six percent. And so when we turned in our master plan or our conservation plan, the Water Rights Resources Division gave us an order that we had to reduce that to less than ten percent by this coming January of two thousand and twenty-two. So what is water loss? So there's two versions of water loss. There's real and apparent. Real losses are basically leaks in the pipes between our discharge at our plants and the meters themselves. Parent losses are things that are calculation errors, just meter inaccuracies, which is what we're going to touch on here in just a few minutes. Does that chart make sense to everybody? Kind of the differences between parent and real? And then I won't put any emphasis on that. Go ahead. And then these are just some little fun facts, acknowledging that this is a nationwide issue. All cities are facing water loss. Not just us. It points out that the average city is facing sixteen percent. Like I said, at the time, we were at, at over thirty. So that's, that's a sizable problem. The next one. And then there's some more facts on just quantities of water and what those losses and impacts are. Any questions so far? I know I'm kind of, yeah, go ahead, Joel.
Yeah, Dave, it seems to me when we, when we did the evaluation here back in two thousand and eighteen or even before that, that we were, we were finding the water lines going to the meters were, were a bit major problem. So the, the meter replacement, will, will that alleviate that issue?
So with the meter replacement, and I am, I'm going to get to some detail on that. So what you're referring to is the real losses. So anything between the treatment plant and that meter, any leaks in the distribution system is a real loss. How we're addressing, I'm just going to get off topic here because it'll be easier, is we're doing that with leak detection. So you'll see as we go through this, the city purchased some leak detection equipment, which is acoustic microphones that we deploy in the middle of the night. Well, we deploy them during the day, but they listen in the middle of the night while everybody's asleep and nobody's using water and they'll listen for the leaks. We gather that data the next morning.
Talk about government conspiracy.
They're not quite that good. But we gather that data and these, these loggers, as they call them, has the ability to recognize from valve to valve where a leak may be and it correlates it and it gives us an approximate spot to start looking. And then we can take our microphones and, and go into greater depth. So we are working on that problem that you're talking about. This, the meters is just more problems, some more things that we're addressing.
Yes, I, I'm, I'm just, so the, the meters aren't responsible for thirty percent loss?
No, no, not entirely. And I'm going to get into some statistics here in just a second. Let's see. So how we, how we addressed it, once we recognized it, that is good to go through. So what we did is we went through and started going through our data. What did we know at the time? How do we get more data? How can we improve on this? So we created some spreadsheets that track all the dynamics from the water leaving the plants to what's being received. And, and when they're in production of water, you know, what's being wasted, how much of it, how much, how much water do we waste to make water? Because they have to wash their filters and do different processes. Another thing that we recognized is that we weren't getting data from the fire department. So we work with Chief Pritchard and he's got a, a tracking method now that we work together with him on to add, add that data to our totals. And I think that that all helps to work together. So this last year up at Keys, we had a project where we replaced the meters that were within the plant because when we started homing in on the production numbers and different things, we realized that we had some inaccuracies within the, the footprint of the building. So last year, we've replaced that and we're working to come up with a volume, but we don't know that yet. We're still working with the SCADA company. But we think we've got it down to about eight percent accuracy of loss within that footprint. So then our next step was the meters. And I have new and old, if you guys would like me to hand these around, if anybody is interested through what we are and we're using, this is what we're going to. What we did a couple of years ago is we knew that we needed to switch meters because, like I said, the customer service from Master Meter, we were not getting meters replaced. We weren't getting a response. And we knew that the accuracy just wasn't there. But we researched five different meter manufacturers, evaluated them all for performance, cost, customer support. And the, the black one that you have there, Camstrup, came out on top. One thing to note is, I guess, as we go through those, as you're looking at them, the accuracy on those is one tenth of a gallon difference. So the old one that you're looking at will not start to pick up a reading until about an eighth of a gallon a minute. The new ones will pick up at fifteen hundredths of a gallon per minute. That's a huge difference. Huge difference. And especially when you see that quantified, what we did was we piggybacked those meters and we would put a flow through it to see which would read. And it's amazing how much water goes through those old ones that you don't even capture.
Which turns into loss.
Exactly. And so that's what we, we've decided or we think is a good portion of it is those low flows where people have leaks in their own system, their toilets, you know, just seeping or drippy faucet. The old meters don't capture that flow. The new ones will. That's where we think we're going to see some large gains by getting a full deployment of those.
So, so a quick, quick, quick question. So Dave, how about durability? Are the old brass ones are heavy and solid, like they'll last forever? And these new plastic ones, what's the, what's the lifespan on that?
Lifetime. So on the body, they claim lifetime on the composite that's in it. Those meters come with a twenty-year warranty for the battery that's in it. If anything were to strip, as you notice, it's, it's a plastic. And that was one of our concerns is will those strip? He says, if you strip one of those, I will replace it for free. So the warranty behind those is phenomenal. I mean, as most of you know, composites in today's technology have replaced metal hands down. So does that answer your question, Joel?
Dave, may I, may I ask a question? It's related to what you're just talking about. So the battery that's in these, is that some sort of battery that we can get elsewhere in case this company were to go out of business?
No. What they do is, is they swap out the meter. So if they go if, if that were to fail within the twenty years, then they warranty it out.
Okay. But if the company were to go out of business at twenty years and these batteries need to be replaced, is this a battery that we can get elsewhere? I'm more concerned about the battery than I am anything else.
You, you are replacing the whole meter. It's, it's a sealed unit and it is in both. So if the meat, because those have, the other one, believe it or not, has a battery in it too.
Okay. So we're at twenty-year life on this?
More questions?
Question on, so a, a lot of the public comments have been about the overall well-being for the citizens of Scappus. How do you answer that question? And I think I know the answer. You know, because I know that if we spend, if we spend it out of the water fund, that puts pressure on rates to go up.
So there, there have been, and I've read through public comments and I know what some of those, so if you want to kind of get off the, this topic, we can definitely just talk candidly. So water, water loss is lost revenue. So for every gallon that we lose as water loss is revenue we didn't get in if it were on the meter, you know, the customer's side. So if there's leaks in the night, we're not capturing that revenue. Therefore, that causes rate increases because for us to compensate for that, we're going to be raising people's rates and this is a way to combat that. So if we can capture all of the real water that's going to the customer, then, then we don't have those rate increases. So there's water savings to be had. And there's other technologies built into those that recognize those leaks. And like I mentioned, I can log into the system and I can see customer data. And if one of those meters senses, there's technology built in, if it senses a leak in the homeowner's side, we can get notification of that. And then we can reach out to the customer and say, you have what we think could be a leak. You might want to check your home because you're showing some usage that's consistent throughout the night when you shouldn't be using water.
The current meters, it's, when we read it, then we might be able to see it for months.
You might be able to see it, but like I said, this, that meter doesn't know the time of the day that it,
Yeah.
that it goes. It just knows that water, water went through it.
We, we've had people that have had water leaks that, you know, they didn't find out until when we were doing the two-month billing.
Right.
But, but Dave, but if it's on the customer's side and there's a leak, they're going to pay for it.
They do, but we have the ability to help them recognize a problem that they may not have.
Okay, okay.
They may not know they have the problem.
Yeah. So if, if they can discover the problem, then they'll save money and then we'll, we'll save water, yeah.
So you have, you're facing, there's water conservation because you have water that's, you know, just being wasted. And then you have the lost revenue and the customer's revenue because they're paying for that. They don't know when or how they're using it. Or do we? But with the new technologies, we do. We can recognize it and notify them. So that's, that's kind of where, that's where the, the biggest dollar is.
When I see it there and I see it is that it's going to be taken care of either way. And one way is going to have upward pressure on rates. Doing it this way is going to help stabilize rates.
Correct. The other, the other dynamic to these meters, as everything is, as you know, in the unstable economy, is these are going up ten percent every year. Those meters cost two hundred and fifty-three dollars right now. They're going to be about two seventy-five next year, so on and so forth. So for every year we wait to deploy, the price will go up ten percent on those meters. Right now, we have about twenty-four hundred of them that still need to be installed of that size. And then there are some larger meters as well. So there's another factor of savings, why the time is of somewhat
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah. Speak directly into the microphone. First, I just learned if I'm really, really patient, I could fill up my hot tub. But secondly, what is the supply like currently? So I know supply line crunch is really heavy. Would this be a purchase in advance or what would the, what would the purchase order situation look like if this were to move forward?
So there is, right at the moment, the, the supplier has a good supply coming in because he anticipated demands with all of his customers. He said he could meet what's projected in here. And then if we know, obviously, for next year that we're going to make up the difference, we could get those in the timely fashion. If we bought them all right now, no, there would be a supply chain issue. These meters are becoming very popular. They are becoming more in demand. St. Helens is looking at converting to them. Rainier's converted to them. Warren Waters is converting to them. It's, it's the wave of the future.
And this is just from a legal risk perspective. If you look at the, the slide that says history, you've been ordered to reduce our loss to less than ten percent by the end of January two thousand and twenty-two. We have funds that specifically, again, my favorite page, page eighty-four of the packet, that we have to make findings that That we have to make findings that for any infrastructure project that it's necessary and that it is water, sewer or broadband. Those are the only three categories of infrastructure that are explicitly allowed in this. The state knows that we have these funds. And so we can't plausibly lead poverty. And my concern is that if we have not brought our, um, loss to under ten percent by their deadline, then they're gonna, they could begin taking enforcement action against us. And so although the federal program offers a lot more flexibility as far as timing goes. This one asked in particular, if you want this to be a priority project. Um, we would need to, we would need to know as early as possible so that those units can be purchased and installed. And we can get our, um, reduction from twenty percent. It's right, right now it's about twenty, twenty-one percent down to ten. Um, as soon as possible to meet that January thirty-first, twenty twenty-two deadline. So from as far as, as far as the benefit to the rate payer. If we're not below that threshold in twenty twenty-two, then we're looking at enforcement action. Um, that is generally in my experience when they have enforcement fines. Um, and those, because those, these are dedicated funds, water funds. Uh, can only be used for, for water things. These, these federal funds can be used for them as well. Then, then those costs would likely be borne by the rate pairs.
Uh, so Peter, so, so the water, Dave too, uh, so the water meter replacements will indeed, in fact, for sure, get us under the ten percent.
That's what the projections show because, um, and I, it took me a while to understand this. So there are two types of water loss. There's the, you have irrigation in your yard. And one of your pipes cracks and you don't know because it's in your yard. And then you get a bill two months later and, you know, you realize that you have that problem. The second one is for something like, um, the seal on the bottom of a toilet bowl being broken or something like that. Where water's slowly leaking into the bowl. That our current meters are not, um, technically able to determine that. So that's money that the consumer is kind of using. I mean, they're not really using it because it's just a leak. But we're not getting paid for that if the leak is under a certain threshold. Because there's not enough water going through to trigger that, um, to trigger that, uh, thing. So there are two types of water loss. Both are bad for consumers. Um, one is particularly bad for, uh, the city in that we're lose, we're getting the loss. Which is keeping us out of compliance and we're also not getting the revenue.
Yeah, so that Dave mentioned that as well. Uh, but, uh, but the question is, so these, these water meter replacements will get us below the ten percent.
That's what can be said with certainty. There's a high probability. So what we've done so far is, is we've done the things that I mentioned. We've worked on the treatment plant optimization, as we call it. We've got that down. So we're down to right now showing for twenty twenty-one, we're at twenty-two percent average for the year. I suspect by the time we close out the year, we're going to be just shy of that. There is no, obviously no smoking gun to this to know exactly how much each of these things are doing. You can't quantify what's buried under the ground. But we do know that there is a large impact to this because you can quantify that one tenth of a gallon into some numbers and assume. I mean, you can't assume that every meter would be a, it's a ginormous number actually. But that one tenth of a gallon startup equates to a lot. If, if you just do the math. Uh, you can, well, here, let me get to this slide real quick. If you can refer to this chart here. Even if you take the dripping leak, the four hundred and fifty gallons per month. If you think of that for home, that adds up to quite a bit when you have twenty-seven hundred homes in the system. Take it to the, I mean, you can just, if you look at any one of these and fit times that by the twenty-seven hundred homes, if every home in there, it's that, that would be a ginormous number. So there is a high probability that this is going to impact this. But I cannot tell you a set number because we don't know which meters are working to what level of accuracy.
Yeah, and that's what I'm getting at is the cost benefit. Oh, yeah, so anyways, there's a probability that we could.
But it, it's the next step that we can show because I have to write a report to the state two months from now that says where we're at, what we've done, what our next steps are and how we're going to get there. This is the next logical step. There is nothing more that we can do to say we've done our job until we've addressed this. This is a major stepping stone in this process. We've done everything else that we can other than replacing pipelines for real loss and we're in the works on that too.
And practically speaking, if we take it from thirty to twelve and they've seen that we've done this, they're going to stay. They're likely going to stay enforcement. I mean, again, part of this is demonstrating that we're taking it seriously. And, you know, showing them respect by taking steps within their timeline and making real progress. Um, you know, under ten, that would be great, but, um, if we're close and we've done all this, I think they'd give us a little grace.
Thank you. Counselor, Counselor Grayson?
And in the end, we're saving the customer money, correct?
We are because for every dollar we've captured back that's just lost down the drain, if you will.
Oh, sorry.
Covers our, covers the city's operational costs and we don't have to go after the rate increases to try to make up that difference. That's, that's the big.
He didn't know I had a question, but I have something else. I'd like, Mr. Mayor, I move that, we move the meeting past nine o'clock.
Hearing a motion to move the meet, to continue the meeting past nine o'clock is our second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, sorry, we're just.
You're fine, you're fine. Um, one thing I would like to draw on, and since our discussion topics bounce this around, if you could look at this particular chart. What I'd like to point out is the difference and you can see the little diagrams representing which meter. But if you look at the chart at the top with the new meter in that green line, you start reading near hundred percent accuracy right from the word go. As soon as they start to recognize flow, they're accurate. Whereas if you look at the mechanical meter, the brass meter, it doesn't actually start to even get close to the hundred percent. Until you're up to a full gallon a minute. That's huge. That's, that's a lot of water to recognize how how long it would take, you know, to fill up a gallon. That's, that's a sizable amount of water that we're not capturing just purely because the technology wasn't there twenty years ago when those meters were installed versus where we're at with today's technologies.
I have a question.
Don't say.
I understand that we're kind of required to do this and, uh, I still don't completely understand why. Uh, biggest complaint I get from, you know, people in the city is the water rates are high, but I mean, every kid you get, gets those complaints, I think. But is this not going to cause some people's water rates to go up?
It potentially could.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I don't see how we're going to get, I don't quite understand that, that, that how it's going to cause them to go down.
It's going to go down because we're going to recognize those low flow leaks. That's where we're not capturing. So when people have a high use because they're irrigating their yard or something. The water is flowing at a rate going through the mechanical meter that is fairly accurate. Where we're trying to target is those trickle flows of the leaky toilets or the drippy faucets. Or things like that that don't turn on the meter.
You can do that at night when they're not using it. I, I kind of get that. I just don't see how that's going to be the whole answer. It seems like it's going to cause some, some rates to go up.
I would say that would be minimalistic.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to hear.
The people who have the high use and, and if you remember back to our discussions where we went through the rates.
Yeah.
We had talked about those who were going to do, you know, moderate usage. And then we had the high rate. So if you go prospectively to those rates and you stay and you're a lower user. This, I mean, this, this really isn't going to capture anything there. You're not going to see anybody's. Because if they're flowing enough water to activate the meter, they're going to get charged for it.
Yeah, that, that makes sense to me. I just, you know, the quantities don't quite add up to you, but I understand that you're saying that it won't make very many people's rates go up.
But the good side of it is, and I see it, um, is that we're going to be able to notify them. So while there may be a month or two that, that there's that little bit of extra water that is capturing, we'll be able to notify that homeowner.
I understand that.
We recognize you have a leak, which is in turn going to bring their bill down, so. Thank you.
But also you had mentioned earlier in the presentation that if we are able, able to accurately account for water being used and they're being accurately charged and we're receiving the funds that we need in order to quote, run a business and provide clean water, then our financial needs are being met. And then we don't have to go out and ask for higher rates.
Correct.
And really we're all, all, both our needs are being met.
Correct.
On top of what usually enforcement action by the state is fines and forced compliance.
Actually, um, the thing that's, that's threatened in the order is reduced water rights.
Oh, even worse.
It is worse.
Now, have they?
That would be catastrophic, so. Um, I think for the most part, we've.
I think Counselor Miller, you got a question or Counselor Pauling?
I just had a quick question. I'm sure it's already been looked into, but has, is there, has there been any other look into, um, possible funding for these? And, and either way, any other state funding for conservation or anything that's available to help pay for these? Is it just nothing out there?
No, th- these are items that are, um, budgeted for every year. So that was one of the questions, is, is this a budgeted item? It is. We budget, we, prior to this last year, we budgeted fifty thousand per year. Recognizing where we at and that we were trying to do this deployment in a reasonable manner without taking on debt and still meeting our other obligations for operational costs. We budgeted one fifty for this year and we were going to try to strive for that every year moving forward. But we're not budget season, so I don't know if it would quite make the one fifty because the same time that we're doing meters, we're also trying to do pipe replacements and other mandated things that we need to do to fulfill our obligations. So it's, it's a balancing act where this, that's why this is such a great opportunity for the city. Because this captures this one problem and can put rest to it within two years. And then we can move on to the next tackle, well, problem to tackle, so.
Um, also, wasn't there mention of if we purchased like a larger quantity at once? Was there?
No.
There's.
I, I'm sorry, I don't know how that was misrepresented.
No, I don't know. Did I hear that? I don't know, maybe I didn't, maybe I didn't.
I think it maybe have been mentioned in previous meetings that there were discounts and stuff. There's not, the, the rates, the costs are what they are. It's set by the manufacturer. He does know that it's going up ten percent every year. So it's, it's a safe assumption that, you know, here for now, we're going to be at another. But what he did say is if we could commit to this volume over the next two years, that he'll lock this year's price for next year too. If we can't get that kind of volume, then he won't hold the lock.
Dave, I just have a que- a couple of questions actually. How long has this company been around in business selling this specific type of product?
Um, I can't remember in the States. They are actually from Sweden originally. So they started in Europe. They've been using this technology from what I'm told for about fifteen years over there. They've been in the States for about, I think, seven to ten.
Okay, and have we talked to other municipalities that are using?
This, that process was well vetted. I talked to several cities, um, Sweet Home and, and I talked to other ones about other, other manufacturers that we looked at. It, it was a well-vetted process.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Uh, so, uh, pipe replacements, we, if we went, could we invest the infrastructure money, the COVID relief funds and pipe replacements? Is that valid?
Yeah, so, um, it's, it is water and sewer infrastructure and broadband are the three infrastructure categories that are explicitly allowed. So if we're, um, if we're using it for those three items. Then we're, we're pretty safe.
So pipe replacements would qualify?
Yeah, any water and sewer infrastructure projects are allowed and pipe replacement will be part of that. In fact, there's actually like, and I can't remember what page it's on. But there's language in there about the importance of replacing aging pipes, you know. Particularly communities that have lead pipes. But yeah, that, the idea is to have clean, safe drinking water.
Do we have any other presentations? Anybody else presenting? Alex?
So no other specific presentations, although we did have the materials Counselor Miller, um, to distribute uh, at the end of last week. So I don't know if you wanted to discuss that now or if you wanted to try to wrap this specific conversation up first.
Let's wrap this specific conversation.
I think Commissioner Garrett had a comment.
Commissioner Garrett? Would you like to take the hot seat?
Sure. Hi there, um, Casey Garrett, Columbia County Commissioner. Uh, Counselor Haugen actually called me yesterday, I believe. And had a concept about, uh, the CZ Trail and, and, uh, a desire to spend rescue plan dollars. And wondered if the county could potentially partner in that effort. Um, the county's American Rescue Plan dollars are pretty well spoken for at the moment. And I'm not sure if there's an avenue, uh, for there to be an eligible expense depending on what you would want to do. Um, but if we were to look at a collaborative project, if you guys were to find a way to make, um, an argument that those dollars might be eligible for something with the CZ Trail. And we wanted to do a collaborative, a project of sorts. And I think the county could support that effort. Um, but we would more than likely use our parks, existing parks funds. So, uh, Councilman Haugen, if you could elaborate on your general concept.
Yeah, yeah, I think the point is, and it kind of follows with what, what Robbie Backes had mentioned earlier, you know, getting the most leverage from, from the COVID relief funds that you can. From an economic model. And for a small investment, you know, the, if we, in this case, if we had a consortium of, uh, the county and Scappus and Vernonia, and we each pooled a small fraction of our relief dollars. We could leverage a great benefit and it would be, uh, it would be a win for everyone. And, and it would be a very, very, I think, uh, useful exercise. Provided, providing, uh, Peter agrees that they, they would qualify for whatever we came up with. A very small amount, uh, percentage wise, uh, of the, of COVID relief dollars could then be utilized for the greater good. For, uh, this consortium of collaboration. So that was, that's kind of the sense that, uh, that Casey and I were talking about.
Like I said, that, the, Peter could weigh in on if he sees any avenue for the RP funds. I would be supportive of some collaborative effort. I know the county would use other dollars. Um, if you guys wanted to pursue that, we would be willing to partner in some way, I'm sure.
Can we just, can we just clarify what project is being discussed here? I have no idea with the scope of this idea.
I'm not sure either. Um, as far as, again, as far as infrastructure goes, what the Treasury guidance says, they, they, um, explicitly say three, um, items and that is water, sewer and broadband. Beyond that, any other use comes with more legal risk. We have to understand what the project is in order to determine how much, um, I mean, there certainly is. There might be something we could do, but I think it would, we would, we would just need to know what it is. And then it would be, is this tranche money the most appropriate one? There theoretically are more dollars to come, so one of those might be, I mean, there is a may perhaps an infrastructure bill coming, which would, would be something for roads and bridges. I know that hasn't passed yet.
But, but, but the, but you are allowed under the existing legislation to pool funds with, with collaborators. And then they, they have a kind of a broad set of categories, you know, like including tourism and so forth. And so you could, uh, we, we could even bank some of this money. You don't have to, you spend it, you could, you could bank it. So you've got a lot of flexibility here. And I think if we're creative, we can take a small set aside. Uh, and do something long-term that's going to have a lot of leverage. Um, and it'd be, it would be just beneficial all the way around.
There is a carve-out for, um, there is a carve-out for tourism. And I guess you would, you would need to make, we would need to understand how this is, this attracts people from out of the area. That's a defined term under Oregon law. Um, and that, um, you know, to, the ideas to generate overnight stays. Uh, it would have to be categorized as a active outdoor recreation. Um, and we'd need to, you know, we need to make other written findings as far as the attracting people from out of the area and then overnight stays in order to really program dollars under, that's at least the state law for tourism. I don't know what the federal law would be. But, um, that's how those grants would, could potentially work. We, we need to understand the project and then take it.
Anyway, it's a kernel of a thought that I think Casey and I, and I think maybe Pete, uh, agree is probably good to explore.
I don't mind exploring it either. I mean, I think we should look. I don't mind exploring it either. I mean, I think we should look. I mean, obviously, the great thing about these mon- funds is we don't have to spend them today, but I think we should answer one question. Maybe, I don't know what, what the Budget Committee members that are here thoughts are. I wouldn't mind hearing some of your thoughts. Teresa? You've just been sitting there all night. I saw you at the Senior Center and forgot to say hi.
You always do this to me. The Senior Center, yes, and Kay is here. Um, they need funding and I think that's something that we need to discuss, but I also like the idea that someone had listed in an email that to form a committee of council members, of the public, uh, business people to sit down and look at how to distribute the money. But the Senior Center definitely needs to be considered in that.
Thank you.
Yes, Scott.
What I would do is probably just, you know, Budget Committee members don't have anything to do except for budget time, so to put them to work for since they are communi- committed, commu- community members. Uh, Ty?
All of this has been really good. Thing I've brought up several times as well is I'd be interested in broadband aspects. One thing we lag behind is high, uh, high broadband infrastructure within our local community, which would be helpful for small businesses. So I know we have a whole lot of fiber all over the place, but I don't know what it would take to actually kick that up.
Ms. Pixley? Any thoughts?
Sorry, I have to unmute. Um, no, I mean, I do, I have some thoughts, but I think I already spoke earlier um about childcare. I think that's something that is high on my priority list. Certainly, I think there's a lot of information in the packet and a lot of uh people that are interested or groups that are interested in seeing some funding, and I think we need to have some specific time to, to look and evaluate those. So um, you know, as a Budget Committee member, I'm happy to continue helping support that. Um, I'm, won't speak for everybody else, but um certainly I would love to be part of a citizen committee on that or part of the Budget Committee taking care of that.
Chris?
Uh, I think there's a lot of things that um, like, I don't know the stats on, on what happened to Scappus when COVID hit, like what, what businesses were affected, what, who was affected? Um, and I'd like to try to make sure that those businesses, organizations, people are uh helped with this, with this, these funds because they're the ones that they're for a lot of it. Um, I like some of the ideas. I like the ambulance idea. I think that's, that sounds great. The, the water meters, it sounds like it's, it's gonna, it's right up the alley for what these funds are for. Um, childcare, I think we need a little bit more information on that. I know there's a need out there because I see it posted on social media everywhere. Um, but I also see some posts on, on some uh, some businesses who do childcare that they have openings. So I don't know if the, the need is a cost thing or if it's a supply and demand thing. So I'd like to know a little bit more about that. Um, cause it's, it's definitely something that, that people in the community are talking about. I just want to make sure if we're going to try to fix it, we fix the right thing. And, and we're not just putting money towards something that maybe isn't going to solve the problem. Cause it looks like what we could, what Eva could do for us and help us would fix a long-term need if it's a supply and demand issue. But it's, it doesn't sound like it's going to help us if it's short-term. You know, maybe we need to look at something else. Um, if she can help us with the high school and put that program back in, I think that would be great. But if, if it's just something that could, she can help kind of slowly build the capacity up. I think we need to, to maybe see if there's another option there that we can get some help uh more quickly for people who need it.
Thank you. I, my eyes are really, I, I don't know, are there other Budget Committee members on the line? Can you just call them out? Michelle Brown?
Yep, I'm here.
It just says MB. There's no video, so it's.
Yep, I'm here. Um, yeah, I think there was a lot of great information tonight. Um, you know, I think the childcare issue is an issue. I hear about it a lot um in the area on different groups that I'm in. Um, I agree with Councilor Greason about the um childcare at the high school. I mean, that would just be um, a great opportunity, especially even for our high school students to have a, a, you know, a career opportunity as well. And uh, yeah, I, I can't think of any other questions I have. It's been a really a lot of information tonight.
Yeah, some, some absorbing. Sandy?
Yes, um, again, I will reiterate that there was a lot of information to absorb. You know, I have uh lots of questions floating around in my, in my head. I, I think it would warrant um another, and I'd be happy to be part of um, a work group. To just delve deeper into some of these issues that um, I think we would run out of time this evening. But I thought that was a really good idea, um, especially bringing in uh business members and um other general public um into the meeting. But um, I think it would warrant more, more discussion on how to uh spend these funds.
Brandon Lewowski, Lesowski? Is he on? Oh, no comments, man. Anyone else? So, go ahead, Ty.
It seems like the, a committee standpoint sounds really good, but there's a couple of items that have more pressing timelines. I'd worry that if we get too involved in, you know, a, a large group together, we're going to pass the time that we would need for.
I, I was.
An order in, you know?
I was going to try to address that. Yeah, so there's, I do know that there's, there's pressing issues here, like if we want to go forward with the water meter replacement, we probably need to decide that pretty quickly. Uh, some of the other ones, the, even, including, I think the ambulance is not pressing today. Well, I mean, you wanted it yesterday, right?
He was talking earlier, last time he presented, he said the lead time on getting an order.
Oh, it's two year, yeah. So the sooner he knows. Okay, okay, okay. So there, there are some that are pressing, but there's other areas that I think that having a committee that would look at the childcare issue, the, the, the pay issues. And I'd really like to, since we have a budget committee that they work on our budget, I would really like it to be that committee. And they do come from business representatives of the city, they, all parts of the city. There's eight members that are appointed in this, or seven members appointed, the seven members of council. So I think it gives a really good diverse group. And maybe we don't have to do those meetings on a council night, but we can call it a, a ARP, ARPA slash budget meeting or something like that where we can have that kind of subcommittee or work group.
Um, I would think so. I mean, and do you have any, I mean, as far as actually getting that group together though? I mean, it would still be, obviously it would still be a public meeting, but we would just do it during the, I don't know if that would work during the day for everybody.
It would be a public meeting and then work group, I mean.
Right.
And work sessions. Um, so I think what I need from, since ultimately the council makes the decisions on this, I mean, are there any aspects of what's been proposed that you're, think that we need to look at tonight and and move forward on? And then there's obviously ones that clearly we're not ready to move forward on, that we want more information. We want the community to discussion. And we want to answer the questions, like many of the commenters that came in that said, here's the question to ask. So does this, how does this benefit the community? And we should be answering that question in each, anything that we're doing and the community as a whole. So.
Okay, so first I think that we need to kind of need to set some ground rules here on deciding what to move forward if we're going to do it that way immediately. First is, does it meet the requirement? That's the number one issue. Number two is, um, I think we need to consider uh, when using these funds, what is the largest impact that they have to everybody? At least that's my feeling on it. I don't think we can go wrong if we make a decision on some of these, on some of these requests. So long as they have a significant wide-reaching effect on our population. That way they are benefiting the largest amount of population. That's at least my perspective on it.
With, with that said, I, oh, sorry.
No, you go ahead.
Council Pauling?
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know if we want to just open it up for a conversation to start. I'm more than willing to throw out what I, what I was thinking, but I.
Throw out what you're thinking.
So honestly, for me, you know, in following on Tyler's footsteps, the two that are the most pressing and the ones that I, I think would be uh beneficial to everybody are both the ambulances and the water meters. I think those affect uh ninety percent of our population at the, at, at the very least. And uh, we really need to uh move forward with those two projects, but that's my personal feeling, so.
Council Grayson?
Can I add something?
Yes.
Like to look at for the next?
Well, so yeah, well, yeah, because I think that we're still, if we decide that, say we take Council Pauling suggestion and we say, we, we want to move forward with those. There's still all these other areas where we're still going to look at, how are we going to spend this money? We're going to look for more community input and look at, I mean, it's still quite a bit of money.
Okay, I would like to move forward on the, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I think there's a couple of us that have our hands up. I don't know if you can see us or not. Um.
No, uh, what's your name?
This is Michelle Brown.
Oh, sorry, Michelle.
And Sandy also, I think, has her hand up. Um, so one of the things I just wanted to, to put out there, um, you know, there's, there's a couple of things that you just mentioned, the ambulance and the, the water.
Meters?
Yeah, the water meter. So I know, having gone through ARPA, actually CARES, Cursay, and now ARPA funds at, at the college where I'm at. I've been on the direct team of how to spend all this money and some things are very clear that are easily spent. And these, those two items seem to be pretty clear when you look at the regulations, how you can spend, spend the funds. Some of the others are more, more muddy and maybe those are the ones that we maybe take a little bit longer to look at and make sure that um exactly how they're spent is the, is, falls within the regulations of the, the money. Just in the last two years, we've noticed that, you know, that not only are things read differently, but also they continue, the government continues to change. Oh, by the way, we're also going to put this in. Now you can't do this, or now you can spend it on this. They keep changing the rules. So that's something that also I just think is important to think about.
Thank you. I, I, yeah, I, I was going to, my suggestion was if there's agreement on council to move forward on items that are clearly allowed, but I, clearly we don't know, the childcare, we need more information, the the trail thing, we need more information. So there's, there's tons of things that this committee is going to be able to look at beyond these couple of items. Sandy? Your hands up, Sandy.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Michelle. That, those were comments that I had as well in, in going through this process previously uh, with my employer that um, I'll, I'll just reiterate what Michelle said, so thank you.
Thank you. Joel?
Um, yeah, to, to me, the, the wa- the water meter is, is the clearest one in my mind, uh, in terms of uh, moving forward with. Yet I still have some questions about the, the cost benefit versus a water line. And so what I would like to do personally is to sit down with Dave um and Chris and, and look at the, at the system where we are, uh, so that I have a confidence that this money is being spent in the best way possible. And so what I would propose is that we, uh, from my perspective is, is uh, is focusing on the water meters for either approval or not at the next meeting. Uh, but give us a little bit of a window here to explore some of the details, so drill down a little bit more into that, at least from, from my perspective.
Mr. Raff, can I add to that? So there is no science to the pipeline thing. There would, there would be no data we could give you because you would have to quantify some sort of a leak or, or known given that you could quantify into dollars in a pipeline, and that's the purpose of the leak detection equipment. Is that we're out there actively sourcing those. These meters are a known problem that we can capture revenue from where is the.
I, I, I agree. I'm, I'm clear on that, but the question I have is that, is a money better spent, spent for line repairs and replacement?
But the line repairs will not get us to meet our state mandate. If I put in the report in two months that we're doing this, that will satisfy a big portion of that, whereas if we say, well, we're just going to start replacing pipelines with an unknown outcome. I don't think that's going to reflect what the state is searching.
Well, but the meters aren't going to term, determine the leaks in the line.
But they're the, they're the next, next thing in the chain of, you know, events that need to happen to check that box. They have the highest probability of failure than the pipeline. The pipelines are being replaced because of age. Not, not because of a quantity of water that we're losing from them. We're actively seeking and repairing those pipes. And so you've got two dynamics. You've got active leaks that you don't know about, but we're working to identify those and we have a pretty good grasp on that. What we're doing is we know that we're repairing these pipes repeatedly, therefore they need replaced. And we're working on that right now out of our budget. We're, we're paying for that out of the budget. Whereas this is the fix to save a lot of money because we know these rates are going to go up on the cost of these meters. Plus we know we're going to capture loss. It is a given, we will capture loss.
So, okay, so.
We're already seeing that in the customers that are out there.
So Chris, Chris would make that same assertion then?
Sure hope so.
But uh, yeah, a- anyway, so, you know, I, I still suggest that we, we give this uh two more weeks and, and we, uh, we, we vote on this whether to move forward with that or not at, at the, at the next session.
Council McQ? A lot of information.
Yeah, it's a lot of information. It's a lot of information. Uh, in all respect to Joel, I'm not sure how valuable that two weeks is going to be, uh, but uh, you know, it appears something we're, we, we should be, we should do anyway. It seems the most, most expedient, the most obvious needs. And uh, and I'm okay with moving forward with, actually with both of those items. Uh, so that would lead us, leave us with like seven hundred thousand bucks after this is all done.
It would essentially leave us with, yeah, a little less than half of the money left to, to make other allocations.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. How much money do we have left over to do other things? You know, it's six to seven hundred thousand dollars probably. Yeah, I, I'm okay.
It's up to you, council.
I'd like to vote on the ambulance and the water meters tonight.
I just need a motion.
Paul's got a question.
Paul? Get that county commissioner out of your seat.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mayor and Council, I, I uh, uh, there's information in your packet on the Small Business Resource Center and I just, uh, you've, you've got some clear ideas around these two projects you're going to vote on. I was just curious if there are questions about the Small Business Resource Center that need to be cleared up, to get it out of what may be the murky zone that you were talking about?
Actually, I take that back. I, I'm sorry. I, I'm actually, I, I would vote tonight on the Small Business Resource Center.
I'm in favor of doing that as well.
Do we have all of the legal questions answered related to that? I do not remember.
Well, what we've said is that it's contingent upon all the other funding. So what's been represented to us is that Representative Otavich's fa- uh, staff has made this a priority. Um, and also that there's state funds that will be available for two bienniums, and our funds are contingent upon that happening.
And I'm okay with adding that as well.
Council Pauling?
Yeah, I mean, as long as, for me, as long as it's contingent on other funds, I mean, you know, that's the biggest thing for me. I know that it's a, that having that resource is, is important. And um, it'd be a very useful for our community, but um, definitely, you know, just funds, making sure that we have everything else in mind, so.
So what I. So what I need is a motion.
But I, I, I'd like to speak to it.
Oh, go ahead.
Uh, I, I would vote for it, but I want to say that a big piece is missing, I mentioned the first time you were here. Normally, we, we, you know, approve things like this based upon a need that the people who need whatever we're trying to do come and share with us, you know, the business people. And all we've heard from i- is you, Paul, you're, I know you're very competent. You really do a good job with what you're doing, but what I really want to hear is these business people, who, who wants this besides you? You know, I, I don't sure who these people are. I'd like to hear from some business people saying, boy, we really need this business center or whatever, you know? But that's a big piece that's missing, and, uh, to me, I mean, I'd probably vote for it just because everybody else seems to think this is a pretty good idea. You don't disagree with your presentation. I'm just not real convinced that there's a need for it. Because I haven't heard anybody that needs it.
That, that's a fair point. Um, I have, I have names that I can't give you of businesses that have been asking for the help and call us every week, but it's confidential information. Business counseling is a lot like therapy. People actually don't like tell you that they need it, and they're getting it, but we have lists of folks who call us every week that we have to refer elsewhere. Um, I, I don't know, I, I, I'm not, I'm not quite sure who else, who else to line up, but there, there are many, many folks who support it. Chambers support it, organizations support it, um, but the businesses that really need this help are very, very unlikely to step forward and tell you that they need help because it's, it's an uncomfortable position for them.
I actually had someone reach out to me and ask what was the holdup with counsel on this issue. I didn't have an answer because I was unsure, you know, what really was the holdup. Um, but they are on the same side of the story as you are in the sense of, um, they're more in the banking financial industry where people are struggling with small business. They would be engaging with them in that sort of way, um, that is seeing this high need and, and was curious what, you know, not to say like every other jurisdiction is approving this and writing checks and what's up with SCAP, who's not doing it, but in general, you know, what kind of was the holdup because this is a huge issue. Again, ins and outs, not totally clear to me because of, you know, I'm not in that industry, but.
Yeah, it's.
I, I am hearing, and people are approaching.
Uh, I can tell that my time with the chamber and my time on the C C E T board, they, you know, the, the need is out there. It's asked for, it's, and the most difficult thing that happens is, is apparently most of the counseling is in Portland metro area. And if you're a small business owner trying to run your business here in town, that's a half day to go take care of, to do that. And that's a lot of money lost in revenue opportunity. So I've been, uh, supporting it all the way back when the P C C Small Business Fund, when people needed a place to stay, and I got city staff to open up the office that was before Alexandria Raines was here and took this, that front office or front conference room. They were able to use that and have it as a thing, but continuously trying to support it. So I think that this investment contingent on all the other monies is wise.
I also think on more than one occasion, every counselor has mentioned throughout COVID, how can we support small businesses or what kind of grants or help can we put out there? And I think that you're an avenue to make, make that become real for us. And so I think that in the past, if we have all said we want to support small businesses, this is one way we can affirm that, correct?
Correct. Yeah, we, this is anecdotally, and, and we've got some small business surveys out there, um, people are, people are not asking for relief. I was having this conversation with the county today. They're not asking for relief grants like they were last year. They're asking for business building grants and how they can grow their business. And we actually teach, helping teach them to fish so much better than giving them fish. I mean, not, not to be trite about it, but it really is how this needs to work because people need help, A, figuring out how to, how to recover and be resilient for the next thing, but also everybody had to get a little more inventive. So how do I turn that into new revenue and grow my business? And frankly, how do I, how do I stay competitive in the work, workforce?
So I think, counsel, what the options is to come out of the work session and make a motion or put it on the agenda, direct staff to bring back a motion, or the council can make a motion to direct staff to move forward on these three items.
We separate them to make sure that everyone, there's a majority vote.
On each item? We can do it however counsel wants.
I said we just do it, we do it for each item. That way, everybody has their votes.
Separate. Okay, so I, I would need motion for each item, well, one at a time.
We have to come out of work session first?
Yeah, you would need to, you would need to open the city council meeting and, um.
Okay, so why don't we go ahead and end the work session and reopen the city council meeting? And is there any? Counsel, Counsel President Grayson?
I move to approve that we allocate two hundred thousand dollars to the SCAPU's rural fire district for the purchase of an ambulance.
Hearing a motion, is there, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, can I get a clarify? Is that a hundred thousand per year as per the plan?
Yes, or.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel?
I move city allocate the, it would be the, are we doing the both installments or the, would it be the full amount? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, but it'll be done in those installments that.
Right, it would just allow us to lock in the rate by allocating the full amount at this time.
And we'll do it in those installments as we've outlined.
Uh, I will, uh, the total amount of five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, five hundred and sixty-six dollars and thirty cents.
I.
It's seven fifty, the total, sorry, the total's seven fifty. That's the second installment.
I have the wrong, sorry. Uh, the total amount is seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for, uh, purchase of water meters.
Hearing a motion from Counsel Polling for, uh, directing staff to allocate seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of water meters, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Miller, is there any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Any other? Any other motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel?
I move, we move, we go forward with funding the Small Business Resource Center.
For twenty-five thousand?
Or? I believe it was twenty-five thousand.
Contingent on their other funding?
Contingent on other funding?
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Polling, any discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Any other motions? I would like a motion, since I can't make a motion as the chair, to, uh, take the rest of the funds and have the budget committee work as a ARPA funding committee to discuss funding of the rest of the funds. Do you have a motion, Counsel Grayson?
Is this the time where we, or it's an ongoing group? It's not like it's this list only, we can add things as we go?
Yeah, because we don't know if we're going to take from this list or what, but it's going to give everyone an opportunity to really look at, you know, close to six hundred, seven hundred thousand dollars.
So just to clarify, you're, you're asking that a motion be made for them to join you in a work group session because
Yes.
Legally speaking, you're the only ones that can actually program the budget. Uh, they cannot, which is why you have the budget meetings and then you as a city council adult, the budget, after you've gone through that process.
Yes. However, creates the legal means for us to work with the budget committee so they can give the input and, and, uh, help us on crafting the rest of the funds. Is there a motion?
I move that we jointly work with the budget committee to analyze a list of options to allocate our ARPA funds.
Balance of the ARPA funds.
Balance of the ARPA fund.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel McQ, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I suggest we include, uh, a broader cross-section, so the budget committee and interested, uh, citizens.
So any, it'll be a public hearing, public meeting, so they'll, their input will be there too.
So we've got.
Yes, 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 yes. Any other discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right. I think we've managed to do this. Okay, announcements. Next council meeting will be Monday, November first, with a work session at six P M., city council meeting at seven P M., then a council meeting on the fifteenth of November, work session six-thirty P M., council meeting at seven P M. Alexandria Raines, do you have anything?
Uh, yes, uh, Mayor and Counsel, um, I just wanted to remind everyone, if you hadn't taken the urban renewal survey that went out, uh, about a week ago, just to go ahead and fill that out. I wanted to, uh, just mention that I met with some representatives from the senior senator this afternoon that went really well, and I, uh, will be attending their meetings from now on on a monthly basis, and, um, just to let them know that if there was anything I could do to system in the future, to let me know. Um, also, and Chief Davis will, uh, touch on this a little bit more, but we're going to have a little Halloween event again this year. And so I told him I'd, I'd help out with that, so I'll be here that day, um, helping with that. And, um, kind of one final thing I wanted to just, uh, share, I, I chatted with the mayor a little bit about this and just wanted to let you all think on this. Um, he and I had thought perhaps it might be beneficial to go ahead and try to plan the annual town meeting for next year, but instead of having it in the winter, maybe when COVID might still be more of an issue, that we could push it out a little bit into spring and actually make the focus the fifty-year vision, since we'll be issuing that R F P soon. So we'd be a little bit out of the weeds, um, in terms of the winter and, you know, cold season, cold and flu season, and we could make, you know, we could really focus in on that particular project, which is going to take years and a lot of public input. So just something to think about, um, and that's all I've got.
Uh, thank you. Uh, if everyone wants to go to our website, there's a, a police chief recruitment to community input meeting that's posted on the website. It's going to be Thursday, October twenty-eighth, from six P M. to seven. It's a virtual. You have to register, so the email address is there to register, and the deadline is on, uh, October twenty-seventh at noon. If you don't want to participate in that, there is a survey monkey out there that you can do. Uh, there's a link to that for community input on the next police chief. And like, uh, Alex said, that we're going to have a Halloween, uh, from four to six. It's going to be the drive-through event, which we had last year, the same thing on Halloween night. So it's going to be sponsored by the Police Department and City Hall, so everyone's welcome.
Thank you. Do you have anything, Dave?
Uh, just that I'm thankful for counsel's support.
Thank you. Counsel Miller?
Thank you. Is, uh, do you want me to touch on?
Yes, that's, yeah.
Okay, I, I thought so. So on, uh, September twentieth, twenty twenty-one, uh, Mayor Burgess brought a motion in front of city council um, to appoint me as the Columbia nine-one communications district liaison. And, um, the purpose of that was to evaluate the, uh, report, uh, the recommendation report that federal engineering had done for nine and one because there were, uh, pretty significant concerns, specifically the recommended, uh, system that federal engineering came back with tied us to Clark County, Washington's radio system, in which it's assumed that we would have no control whatsoever, yet we're relying on their system for primary radio coverage. I don't want to get into the weeds on this. Um, I've, you know, I've written a pretty extensive report, and, uh, we could sit here for another probably three hours and talk about this. So what I want to do, um, if it's okay, is just ask if there's any questions and then, um, City Manager Raines, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I would ask if you are willing to kind of regurgitate and stress. I'm, I mean, I'm the technical, as we all know, I'm kind of the tech, technical, and lack of a better term, expert on this topic, but yet I cannot speak to the operational impacts that it has and the safety consequences. I can, I can, but I don't think it's appropriate for me to. So I would defer to you and perhaps the public safety chiefs in the room to maybe, um, reiterate a little bit so counsel can be informed to make a decision if this is something that we want to take on and try to, uh, course correct, so to speak. We want to, can we start with questions? Is there any questions by council members?
Still absorbing all of it.
I'm curious, can we revisit this with?
Well, you know, one, one thought I had too, and, and I know this would delay this conversation a little bit, but we actually do, as it happens, have a work session scheduled with the fire district, um, at the next meeting from six to seven. So just, just a thought, um, there could be a broader discussion with them, you know, involved and their board, um, if you'd be interested. Obviously, we can continue to have this conversation tonight as well, but I just wanted to point out that that actually just, as it so happens, is the next session.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, a reasonable plan, um, because of where nine-one-one is at with this issue and, um, don't mean to, uh, speak negatively about them, but their lack of response and willingness to communicate with us on this issue, um, kind of for me, um, worries me a little bit. It's a, it's a minimum of nineteen point five million dollar bond asked to the taxpayers on something that's woefully deficient for a community. And there is, uh, Alex, I'll let you touch on this a little bit more with, with your concerns in. I did work with, uh, City Manager Raines on this topic extensively for the last couple of weeks along with legal counsel because there is a significant risk. And, um, you know, public safety is the number one service that a government entity has to give to it, to a, uh, community. And if you, um, if you read my memo, you understand the impact that this would have. An example, or for example, there's, just to quickly illustrate how important this is, there's major gaps in coverage where if this were to go through the fire pagers that, uh, the fire department personnel rely on to get dispatched to incidents, whether it be medical, fire, cardiac arrest, anything, they would not receive that dispatch. So how is anything else important, ambulances, personnel, anything, when you put it into perspective that they cannot even get a dispatch from a nine-one-one call? So wrap your head around that because I think that that's really illustrates the significance of this issue.
Peter?
So, um, Alex had asked me to kind of independently take a, a look at the memos and the craft. Uh, it's a one and a half page executive summary. It kind of speaks to these issues. And this was an issue that I just had not been aware of at all about the, the coverage issues. It makes perfect sense because of the topography of the county, but that there would be significant coverage issues. Um, I kind of the, what Alex and I internally, the conversation that we had had, um, is, okay, is how big of an issue is this? Is it widely known issue? And so I had some conversations with first responders out that don't live or work here. And what I found is that all of them were aware of the issues. You, we had some, had some very candid conversations with me about the potential impact on recruitment. And really what it came down to, and I am not a first responder myself, and so I, I think I put in here, I had not viewed it from their perspective, um, but the, the reality is it's, it's about safety, and it's about just the mental toll of being on a job and responding and, um, not knowing whether or not you're going to be able to call for backup, order radio more information. And there's certain coverage areas of the county where they're just knowing that if they're, people know that if they go there, there's, they're just, they're going in blind essentially, and they're not going to be able to get help. And they had some conversations with me about, you know, just based on training and based on, um, the culture and, and how they take command of a situation and make other people feel safe, that it's really hard for them to say that they don't feel safe or ask for help. And I had never really thought of it, of it from that perspective. And kind of how I thought of it is, what if we're not asking them to ask for help? What if we're asking them to say, if this is an issue for the SCAPU City Council that you want to take on? Um, you know, kind of a, thank you for prioritizing the safety of first responders. And it seemed like that might be an easier conversation for people to have. Again, this is, when you first look at this, this does not seem like it would be an issue. It would be like our issue, but when we, um, when you think about that how it could, uh, impact recruitment and retention and other things, and just about sending the message to people that we prioritize their safety, I can understand why, um, this is an issue for us, even though just as it, it would be an issue for the county, it would be an issue for, um, any of the rural fire protection districts. It would be an issue for other police that are responding outside of a city. Um, the, I, I mean, the memos touched on things that I had never thought of, such as large facilities that could, you know, um, could pose a catastrophic, uh, if something were to happen to them. So, um, I think that i- in my mind, um, there's some conversations that need to happen. And probably some coordination needs to happen, but the first step is understanding whether you as a council kind of want us to invest more time in it because this could take quite a bit of time, particularly if the city's helping kind of convene parties and take a leadership role in it.
Why don't we have a little bit of this conversation when the fire department board is here and the chief is not tired of us keeping him here till 10 o'clock? I know, well, well, but this is an issue that can affect you. So why don't we definitely, if council members have questions of Tyler and his memo, uh, contact him directly or contact Alex or whatnot. But thank you, Tyler, for the work you put into it.
Yeah. You only put me to sleep. No. I probably, I can understand, believe me, and that was me trying to keep it short. So, um, but, uh, the only thing I would ask is, um, because of the urgency that's explained in there too, that, um, we do have to act, if we are to take interest in this, we have to decide and we have to decide sooner than later. Otherwise we are going to miss the, the opportunity to affect change and to, uh, potentially have this done the right way. I, uh, know that Chief Pritchard has, uh, read my memo too. Um, I won't speak for him, but, um, I don't know if, uh, Chief Davis has, um, I, I of course know that Alex has too.
Thank you, Tyler. Counsel Pauling, you have anything?
Uh, no, actually, I will, uh, leave mine short.
Counsel President Grayson.
I just wanted to thank all the experts in the room, whether it's staff or people from other agencies, speaking on behalf of their interests and projects that benefit our community. So thank you for being here and representing and serving.
Counsel Hagen.
I'd like to echo Counselor Grayson's comments. This is wonderful to see the staff and, and the citizenry interacting along with commissioners and representatives from all the entities. Uh, so thank you. Um, I just want to note that, you know, Tyler did a amazing amount of work, uh, on his nine-one-one emergency response. Uh, and so, uh, you know, we really should applaud him. And that may be an opportunity for pooling of, uh, COVID relief funds to do a legitimate study in there because certainly the county and over Nonya has real issues with this. So that might be a real opportunity, but I'm hoping that, uh, the, uh, work group can, can look at that and examine the support for that. And, and other than that, I'd just like to say, I think we should pause for a brief remembrance of a great leader that passed today, uh, General Colin Powell.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Hagen.
Uh, yeah, first of all, uh, I'd like to introduce, uh, uh, Kay Waring. And she's the new chairman of the, uh, uh, SCAPU's Community and Senior Center, and she's doing a terrific job. And it's a job and she is working very, very hard, as are all the board members and people in, in that organization. And we appreciate all you're doing, uh, we really do. Uh, and the other one is just real short, a really cool little book, uh, put on, uh, put out by the, uh, the, uh, Columbia, uh, it's the Columbia Museum Association, it's the, used to be the Columbia County Museum in St. Helens. And he put one out every six months. This has got, uh, some, about entertainers. And, uh, one of the entertainers in here is, uh, Fred Marassi, SCAPU's, uh, gentleman, uh, not only tremendous athlete, but a tremendous person in our community for many, many years. And it's a nice, really nice tribute to him in here, plus a 1912 Olympian, uh, that competed with, uh, uh, all the big names during that Olympics, uh, uh, it's a great book, costs you a couple bucks, but, uh, you know, if you get a chance to pick it up, you can get them at the museum. Thank you, and thanks for everybody's work today. It was a long meeting, appreciate everybody's.
Thank you to the staff. Thank you to the budget committee for turning out tonight and your input's been very valuable and, um, informed. And we look forward to working with you on evaluating the rest of the funds and the community that showed up. Thank you, and thank you to the staff. We kept you here late again and, uh, but we appreciate the work. So thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.